The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavia Hall County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
This meeting of the Starkville Board of Aldermen will now come to order. Please rise for the sake of the pledge allegiance to be followed by a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you have before you a copy of the modified written agenda. Are there any proposed revisions to the written agenda?
May I?
Alderman Corey.
I would like to move the item under Board Business of the Item E, consideration of making appointments to the Historic Preservation, Stormwater, and Library Boards to consent with the appointment of Mary Love to the Stormwater Advisory Board. Let's see, I'm gonna make sure I get the names right. Philip Griffin to the Library Board and Whit Wade and Cindy Sullivan to the Historic Preservation Commission.
All right, so the proposed revision is to move Item 10E at the top of Page 3 to the Consent Agenda with the appointment to the, with the appointments to the Historic Preservation Committee being Whit Wade and Cindy Sullivan, the appointment to the Stormwater Board being Mary Love Taggart, and the appointment to the Library Board being Philip Griffin.
Correct.
All right, is there any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection seeing none? Please note that Item E at the top of Page 3 has been moved to Consent Agenda. Further proposed revisions. Alderman Vaughn.
Elf Engineering Street. I would like to remove Number 2 from the consent.
Item F2 on Page 5 has been removed from the Consent Agenda. That is a request of approval of a consultant to perform engineering and design related services for the Lynn Lane Multi-Use Path. Further proposed revisions. Alderman Vaughn.
H, 2 and 3 removed from the consent.
All right. That is Items H2 and 3 on Page 6. Item H2 is a request of approval to advertise and fill vacant police officer positions. And Item H3 is the request for approval to hire Clayton McCann as an independent contractor for construction inspector services in connection with the Hospital Road rebuild project. Any further proposed revisions?
I've got a few.
Alderman Dumas.
Under Board Business D, consideration approving the visitors' convention council request. Consent.
All right. The proposed revision from Alderman Dumas is to add Item 10D on Page 2, consideration of approval of the VCC 2% fund budget to the Consent Agenda. Is there any objection? Any objection? Any objection? All right, seeing none, please note the change. That item's been placed on consent. Alderman Dumas.
Under Board Business N, consideration making appointment to the Tree Advisory Board. I'd like to move that to consent with Ms. Jane Lovelace filling the position for Master Gardener, Garden Club Representative.
All right. The proposed revision by Alderman Dumas is to move Item N at the bottom of Page 3, consideration of making an appointment to the Tree Advisory Board with that appointment being Jane Lovelace to the Consent Agenda. Is there any objection? Any objection? Alderman Carter.
I've got no objection to it, but is that something that we need to, would it be in your preference to see some kind of resume or something like that?
Well, it's, her letter is in the, is on the table.
It is.
Okay. It's one of the new items.
Is there any objection to that revision? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection? All right, seeing none, please note the change to your agenda. Item N at the bottom of Page 3 has been placed on the Consent Agenda.
Under 11 Department Buildings, our Department Business Building Codes and Planning, both of these items, approval for Central Station. I'd like to move both of those items to consent.
All right. Proposed revision from Alderman Dumas is to place Items 11B1 and 11B2 on the Consent Agenda. Mr. Griffin.
Alderman Dumas, there's conditions on the plan. Are you recommending placement on Consent Agenda with conditions that were recommended? That they were revised by the plan that's under?
Aye.
All right. So is that with conditions as recommended by staff on both items?
That's correct.
All right. So the proposed revision from Alderman Dumas is to place Items 11B1 and 11B2, both appearing on Page 4, and both with the addition of, along with conditions as recommended by staff on the Consent Agenda. Any objection? Any objection? Any objection seeing none? Both of those items have been placed on the Consent Agenda. Please note the change on your agenda. Further proposed revisions?
Mr. Mayor, may I raise an issue?
You may.
On Page 6, under Personnel, H, Number 4. I have a question with respect to the contract that goes with Mr. Guin and just want to raise an issue with the Board and would recommend that that get pulled off as well before that goes through on consent.
Okay. Is there any Board member that would like to pull that off of the Consent Agenda?
So be it.
All right. Where are you?
Under Personnel, on Page 6.
Page 4. Okay, I've got you. All right, so that's the request of approval to continue services if Hidoff again as an independent contractor for electrical inspection services for the 2010-2011 year. Any further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions? Are there any further proposed revisions? Alderman Dumas.
I'd like to, can I recognize Ms. Jane Gregory? What's the time on the street closures?
Close at 4, 4 until about 9:30 PM.
4, so say 4 to 10.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'd like to move Under Board Business G, closure of Main Street, with the time on that being from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
All right. The proposed revision from Alderman Dumas is to move Item 10G on Page 3, consideration of approval closing Main Street and providing in-kind services for the Viva Stark Vegas Downtown Block Party to be held on September 3, 2010, from 4 to 10:00 PM.
And to be specific with that, that's from Washington to Jackson.
All right. With the time being from 4 to 10:00 PM and the location being from Washington to Jackson Street to the Consent Agenda. Is there any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection seeing none? Please note the change to your agenda. That item has been placed on consent. Any further proposed revisions? Are there any further proposed revisions? Any further proposed?
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to reorder one item. This is out of respect of all the hard work they've done. Item, Under Board Business, Item M, consideration for the approval, the application for the Tiger II Grant for the City of Starkville. I know Dr. Bethany Stitch and Jim Gaff are here, so I'd like to move that to the beginning part of our Board Business.
Would you like to move that to Item A?
I'd like to move that to Item A so we can go ahead and get that item over with. Out of respect of their time, not over with.
All right. The proposed revision is to reorder the agenda placing what was formerly Item M at the front of the Board Business portion of the agenda, making it Item A and reordering the rest of the Board Business agenda. Is there any objection? Any objection to that proposed revision? Any objection? Any objection seeing none? Further proposed revisions?
Mr. Mayor, would there be an objection to Roman numeral 10, Board Business A, if you would give the names? If there's no objection to those names being given?
Yeah, I can give those.
Could you give those if there's no objection? It seems like they could go to consent.
I have a quick question about that. When it says on the back that each member of the Board and the Mayor would appoint two members, that, that's just the members on the committee?
Yes, that was of the.
For each, okay.
Of the Board Municipal Complex Committee. And those that have been submitted by the, the members of the Board on that committee and, and myself are Roy Ruby to serve as the Chair and members being Walter Williams Senior, Frank Childs, Bethany Stitch, Robbie Koblenz, Amiel Lovely, H. William Webb, Eric Highselt, and Nick Wilson. And also another thing that needs to be noted that's not in your packet is Lynn Spruill and I would serve as ex officio on the committee. And that's, nobody's made that as a proposed revision yet. That was in the event that somebody did want it.
Mr. Mayor, move that, that be placed on the Consent Agenda. There's no objection.
All right. Alderman Perkins has proposed that the agenda be revised to place what was formerly Item A under Board Business on Page 2, consideration making appointments to the Municipal Complex Citizen Committee, those people being Chair Roy Ruby, members Walter Williams Senior, Frank Childs, Bethany Stitch, Robbie Koblenz, Amiel Lovely, H. William Webb, Eric Highselt, Nick Wilson, and Wiseman and Spruill as ex officio on the Consent Agenda. Any objection? Any objection? Seeing none, please note the change to your agenda. That item has been placed on consent.
I guess one last. I have no, I have no issue with your MDA grant proposal being placed on consent with the understanding that there was a typo in our packet of Macon being on the public area notice.
Yeah.
And that has been corrected. It just wasn't, wasn't corrected in time to go into.
Considering that corrected, I move that we place Mayor's Business A on consent.
Alderman Dumas has proposed revision to the agenda placing Item A under Mayor's Business with the change from City of Macon to City of Starkville in the resolution made. Is there any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Seeing none, please note the change in your agenda. That item has been placed on the Consent Agenda. Any further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions? All right, seeing none, a motion to approve the agenda as revised would be in order.
Some who?
Motion has been made by Alderman Corey to approve the agenda as revised. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alders in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alders opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. First matter you have before you is the approval of the Consent Agenda. Is there any objection to the Consent Agenda as revised? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection seeing none? The Consent Agenda as revised has been approved. Next item you have before you is the approval of the July 20, 2010 minutes. Discussion.
No approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Dumas to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen held on July 20, 2010. Alderman Dumas, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I do not.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion seeing none? Alders in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alders opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. And that will take us to comments by the Mayor and Board. And our power outages are done, so I, I have no comment tonight. Any comments by the members of the Board?
I have one.
Alderman Sistras.
We had asked the department heads as part of preparing the information that they put in the packet to add an account number and a remaining budget balance for each of the items that they requested pay authorization for. And I just wanted to say thank you for doing that. That really helps us tremendously in evaluating the issues you put before us. But thank you very much.
Further comments by the members of the Board? Alderman Vaughn.
I've got one. Looking over, I was just thinking about this, this coming back with the Lynn Lane Mother Pass. I was just looking at that and thinking about the Carver Drive ditch all at the same time, where we, we reluctant to just go in and make a decision. We want to make a decision now, what are we going to do with Lynn Lane ditch, with Lynn Lane Mother Pass? I'm just wondering why we can't make a decision, what are we going to do with Carver Drive ditch? We done put two pipes down, been down in two or three, two or three weeks, I guess. No work to start on there. And I, we, we can find so much revenue to fix any other thing, but this, a project been sitting there 20 years before, before we even came to the Board. But seeing that we can't find no, nothing to, to get this done. And, and those are taxpayers too, just like everybody else is taxpayer, they're taxpayers. And I, and, and we talking about raising taxes and that, like I said again Wednesday night, how do you think they gonna feel when you talking about raising taxes and you taking, taking their tax money, taking it somewhere else, and you can't take their tax money and fix something they've been begging for 20 years? That, 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 that don't, it don't ring no bell in my head. And, and some of the constituents, and not only them, some of the citizens feel the same way. How can you want to raise taxes and then you can't fix this, a request that people have been begging for? In other words, we just like, we, 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 we robbing from the poor, giving it to the rich on this, on this end, which is what it look like we doing, with the Robin Hood style. But I, I don't understand it. And I, I hope the Board can help me to understand this, why we can find so much revenue to do so many things and can't do something very simple. I, I can't understand that. That, that confusing me. And, and making me forget, what are we here? We here for the welfare of every citizen. We here for the welfare of every street, every community. All got to be treated fairly, they taxpayer. And that's what we are here for, but seeing like we looking over these, some of the things that need to be taken care of. I guess God gonna have to come down and touch our hearts and move somebody out the way for us to understand that right is right, wrong is wrong. We can find a thousand ways to do wrong, but able one way to do right. And we're not doing right about this situation. And I hope y'all help me with this. Board, Mayor, I hope y'all, seeing like this is a dead project now. Two pipes been sitting there two or three weeks, no movement.
And I guess a, a couple of comments on that. The item in the agenda for the Lynn Lane Bike Path tonight is for the continuation of the design work on the path. There is still not enough funding in the current capital improvement plan to fund the project. It, it, it will be a struggle to fund. But a decision that this Board made last year in adopting the 10-year road improvement plan was to include that, that project on it going forth with the design work in hopes that eventually there will be funding available to capitalize on the grant for that project that we weren't able to capitalize first up. And the history on that project, there was a grant that we had, and there is reason to think we might be able to get again, that is an 80/20 match. Now, where the 20% match will come from is, it's still going to be a difficult question to answer, but we're not there yet. And on the Carver Drive project, it, it has been contracted out, the, the first phase of it that the Board approved back in the spring, and work will be, will be beginning on that shortly. Edward, do you have an estimation of how long it's going to take them to, to start that first phase of the process?
All the materials are still not in there. The drainage pipe, as Alderman Vaughn indicated, has been delivered to the site. We're still waiting on some sewer materials to have to be freshly ordered. It's expected that those will arrive either tomorrow or the following day, and then the contractor will have all the materials on site. So I'm hoping next week we'll probably be able to get some more weather.
And of course, that is just the very first phase of it, which if, if the Board continues down that route, will be a very long process because it, it only gets about 40 feet this year. But it's a very costly process. Further comments by the members of the Board? Alderman Carter.
Even though it's been put on consent, the consideration of participation in the game day shuttle, I called Ms. Jeanette Bailey with Parking Services and I found it more feasible. I wanted a route of people if they actually want to know where the game day shuttle picks up and drops off. If you can, I was told to recommend transit.mstate.edu is a website, transit.mstate.edu, and it's, it can do far better than giving a handout here. It's got all the everyday route shuttle, the shuttle routes, and then also game day, the additional four different routes to drop off. It's a pretty good website. Check that out if you get a chance.
And, and I'll say, I used it last year. It's a terrific service. Terrific service.
Further comments by the members of the Board? Further comments by the members of the Board? Any further comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move to citizen comments. Any citizen wishing to make comments may do so by coming forward and introducing yourself, and you'll be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes.
Good evening to Mayor Boe. My name is Abington Ward Selb. Good evening to Vice Mayor Sutron and Alderman Vaughn.
Thank you, Alvin. Evening.
The citizens is to the point of taking a stand. We evaluating the last administration versus this administration. Our last administration, we needed, street, street. We needed one, we got. We, we needed an air control vehicle that we got, that, that was needed. We had the beautification committee, sidewalk committee, and code enforcement office that was needed. This administration, that we have gotten needed streets past due. We, we have gotten reroute project. And we're just curious about the alcohol on Sunday has done us any good.
Thank you, Mr. Sutron. Thank you. Further citizen comments. Mr. Burnham.
I'm Michael Burnham from Ward 2. I've got two subjects I'd like to address with you. The first one has to do with public information and city awareness of the public of these meetings. Very few people from the public are represented here tonight, and I think that's largely because of the fact that they don't know about it, nor do they know that there's going to be a discussion of budget issues this evening, which affects all of us. I don't know where the responsibility lays on this. This morning's paper in the Starkville Daily News, I went through that issue. The front page has three articles about what's going on with the Board Supervisors, but there's not one word about a Board of Aldermen's meeting for tonight in this paper. I checked in Monday's paper and I could find nothing. I checked in Sunday's paper and I could find nothing. Saturday's paper unfortunately is in the bottom of my parrot's cage, so I couldn't check it. Last week on Thursday, there was one brief notice that there would be a meeting tonight, and that was in the article that based on Vice Mayor's comments concerning the possibility of a tax increase. Somebody needs to work on this so the public gets the information, whether the Board needs a public information person, somebody who has the responsibility for public relations to see that that information gets out. It needs to get out. The paper is not, has not met the responsibility of picking up the information and doing it itself. So as a citizen, I would like to see the meetings announced in the paper. The Starkville Daily News today had a lengthy announcement in around town about a fundraising deal in Aberdeen, so obviously the paper doesn't lack space to put this information in. It also had an article about a 78-year-old man who took 90 rides on a roller coaster. That doesn't interest me, but I think the people need to know that these meetings are going on. The second issue, item I wish to address, has to do with the tax increase. It's budget time and I'm here. I was dismayed to see that there was a consideration of increasing the millage by only one mil. I think that the Board needs to go to the max. The Board of Supervisors always go for the max. They don't seem to be concerned, but as the Board of Aldermen, I think you need to go to the max. I don't think the people know that out of the tax dollar, that the city is only getting 15 cents out of every dollar that is collected from taxes, that the school gets more and that the Board of Supervisors get more. I'm not willing to live in a community where garbage is collected only once a day or, or once a week, or where I'm going to have to bring my garbage to a central pickup point because we can't afford a sanitation department. I don't want to live in a neighborhood where I have to go ahead and collect money to support a local policeman because our own police force doesn't have the money that it needs. And I realize that if 50% of the budget goes for our firemen and our policemen, I see tonight that there's discussion about replacing a vacancy, filling a vacancy on the police force. This happens all too often. I have one minute or that's it?
One minute.
This happens all too often that we hire policemen. One would think that for the number of police that are hired and that are introduced at these meetings, that Starkville has a heck of a lot of police on the force, and I think it's that it's just turnover. We get them, they don't stay. They move on. Like I said, I'm on a fixed income. I don't like to see taxes go up, but I know that if I want to live here, I'm going to have to pay for what I want. When I go to the grocery store, if I want a steak, I have to pay for it, or else I eat hamburger or chicken or something like that. I'm willing to pay for an increase in taxes, and I think that the Board, in order to keep this city moving in the way that it has to go or wants to go, that it has to go ahead and increase it to the max that it can. I say go for it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burnham. Further citizen comment?
Yes, sir.
My name is Jessica Cogger. Welcome to the Board. Hi, I've been a member of Ward 6 since 1998. And I get a thing now that I'm not in the city limit, but I've been paying city taxes since 1998. As, as I speak right now, my garbage is a help house. It's about tall as the house, and I don't have no one to pick it up. But since 1998, they've been picking it up since, they stopped November the 2nd of last year. And now they say that I'm not, I'm not a member of the city, but my tax dish is 201. Anything over 200 is in the city. No, 200, anything over 201 is in the city, but now they show me a map that said that my house lies so many yards from the, the city limit line. But the same map they showed me in 2010, I'm sure back to you in 1996. So I don't know what the problem is.
And I've had Ms. Spruill working with Don Posey, who is the county administrator, to sort this one out for the last couple of days. Ms. Spruill, could you brief us real quickly on what, what your research efforts have uncovered?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Posey and I have looked at the map. Ms. Posey's had a conversation with Mr. Cogger. I've had a conversation with Mr. Cogger, and I've shown him on the map, as I said, Ms. Posey, that Cogger Road was taken in in 1998, and our city limit line lies along Cogger Road. Up to a certain point after that, Cogger Road is in the county. Mr. Cogger lives in the county, and apparently one of the things that the city did with the 1998 annexation, and I'm not sure what year, I believe 2004, 2005, but it was in early 2005, we paved all most of Cogger Road and the whole of Cogger Road, the part that was also in the county. And I can surmise from that, or I must surmise from that, that from that, there was some level of confusion because we paved it as to where we would be picking up. level of confusion because we paved it as to where we would be picking up garbage. So we erroneously began picking up garbage where the chip seal was left. And Mr. Collier came to us, I think in January of this year, maybe December of this year, and began having a discussion regarding the school district and his children, which is a separate issue, but highlighted our concern about where he was. So we looked on the map, and he is indeed in the county, and his tax bills that he showed me reflect no payment to the city as it relates to taxes, it's all county taxes that's being shown. He has, I have the GIS map here, which I'm happy to provide forward. Mr. Posey said that they are going to arrange to pick up his garbage. He's got four houses on there that he's notified his waste management company that will be picking up their trash. We have some arigides associated with the sanitation pickup that we began in, I presume, two thousand and five again. I didn't trace it back to two thousand and five, but we have had no sanitation bills that have been paid by Mr. Collier since two thousand and five, at the notice of eight forty-nine, Collier Road is the exact correct. So there's been no sanitation bills have been paid, so we don't owe him, because I had offered to pay him back for, you know, if we had picked him up or not picked him up, then I offered for us to pay him back if we owed him money when he had paid us. But he has not paid us any sanitation charges, so we are not, according to my records, owing Mr. Collier anything, and this county will begin picking up his garbage.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
You may.
Ms. Spruill, are we indexed on the latter part of nineteen ninety-eight, either October or November, and we picked his garbage up for eleven years?
I'm not familiar with that. I don't believe that. We did pick it up since nineteen ninety-eight? I'm not.
Okay, my question then is, when is the last time we picked it up? Was that last year, like you said, in November?
November, the second.
Yeah, let me, I'll be back with Ms. Collier to talk to Ms. Spruill a minute. November two thousand and nine. Ms. Spruill, you mentioned the issue of the school district, and of course, that's a separate issue, and you do agree and acknowledge that the school district had disqualified his kids from attending the district, and now that there's been a decision for those kids. I know it's a separate issue too, based on information, to attend the Starkville School District. Is that your information?
I have no information relative to his children other than what he's provided me, and I don't know that.
I understand. Let's move on to the next question. Did you ever reference to me at any time that a portion of Mr. Collier's property was within the city limits?
I-
A portion. I think you may have sometimes said that his house-
Then he had told me that a portion of his property was within the city, but in looking at the map, I find no portion of property. In fact, it's a Robert Collier, not a Jesse Collier. And Mr. Collier, I believe, according to Ms. Harris, who lives with him, says that all of that land belongs to Robert Collier, and it is all in the county.
So are we absolutely certain, you know, I think we're under the impression that Collier Road was, the entire road was in, or is in the city limits. Are we one hundred percent certain that that entire road is not in the city limits?
Yes.
Now, for the purpose of our discussion for the public, Collier Road is if we go from Southern School traveling north to the landfill, it'll be the road to your left off of Rock Hill Road there. That's Collier Road. So Ms. Spruill, I just want to be absolutely certain that, you know, if he lives in the city, or in a part or portion of the property in the city, you know, that he does not be denied city services. So you have done complete research on this. Is there anything our city attorneys need to do before we just tell them, no? And I'm not disputing your information, but I just want to make sure that we don't, you know, deny him city services when the truck runs down the road. So are you fully representing to the board that his property, all of it, is in the county?
Right.
And Mr. Collier, let me ask you this. You do agree that your property is not owned by you? Is that correct?
Okay, it's family property.
Is that correct?
Okay, it's correct.
That's family property.
Family property.
Now, when did you pay sanitation fee, if any, to the city of Starkville?
I didn't pay sanitation fee because I didn't pay it because, well, one time I didn't have the money to probably pay it.
So at no time since nineteen ninety-eight, you have not paid the sanitation fee?
Yeah, I paid some.
Okay.
I paid some.
Okay, do you agree with Ms., we're going to move on in a few minutes, but I want to get this clear because it won't go away here. Do you agree with Ms. Spruill's assessment that your property is not in the, is not in the city?
No, I don't agree with her.
Okay, have you looked at her map?
I looked at her map, the same map she got, you know, take the same map thing I got in nineteen ninety-six.
Okay, let me, Mr. Mayor, maybe, you know, there's some issue here. Maybe, Mr. Aladman, have you seen the map?
I have not seen the map.
Could you, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, would you just let him and Lynn just relook the map? I just want to make sure that there's understanding that the property, you know, when the property came to the city in nineteen ninety, I was under the impression that the whole road was in, but I didn't see no map, and I didn't go, I'm not an engineer, I got to measure the meets and the bounds description, so, but we just need to make absolutely certain if it's determined that it's not, then, you know, then it's not. Mr. Collier, I'm going to ask the mayor, would, you know, would he just have the attorney just at his convenience real soon for you to relook the map? I think that's the issue right now, because you're thinking that your property is in the city, and I know you based that determination on the Starkville School District's recent determination. I know you told me that the Starkville School District has now allowed your children, but let's just see, if you don't mind, would you have an objection at some time in the near future meeting with the attorney and maybe the mayor, however they arrange it, just to take another look at that?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and then, you know, and then if it's not in the city, and I'm not making that, saying that, we're just talking aloud, and if it's not in the city, for some reason, as to whatever it may be, then, you know, the county is offering to pick your garbage up, but let's further research, and hopefully you'll appreciate that. And could you maybe stay around till a break or something? Maybe Ms. Spruill can, while you're here, can let you know when you make a meet with she and the attorney or something, maybe a few minutes into the meeting. Would that be okay with you?
It's okay, okay.
And I'm not, this mayor chair in the meeting, but, Mayor, let me go ahead and yield the floor so you can finish whatever you want to say.
Okay. Sure. Yeah, well, direct city attorney to review the map, and we will have a meeting on it. And the important thing about this is you either have sanitation service with the city or you have it with the county, and so it's not a question of whether there's sanitation service. So we'll get that reconciled, but where it's reconciled there is what it will have to be. Mr. Collier, do you have any other comments?
Mr. Collier, before you leave, let me ask you, Lynn, do you know right off, right off, so he can go ahead and go, do you have an idea about when you may be available? Chris, you think you may be, you need to wait a day or two or something, just calendar or something?
I'm coming over actually tomorrow to meet with Mr. Hattaway at eleven, and so I don't think that's going to take long, so we could probably do it at eleven thirty.
Okay, Mr. Collier, could you be down here at City Hall maybe, you said about eleven thirty? Could you be at City Hall in the, just sitting in the reception area, and the mayor's off about eleven thirty tomorrow? Would that suit you? Okay, that'd be good. Thank you so much, Mr. Collier. Yes, sir.
Further citizen comments? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jane Beamer, and I live in Starkville in the Greenbrier area. And thank you for giving me this opportunity to tell you of a Starkville concern that's very important to me. I noticed that item number ten C of board business in today's agenda is consideration of calling for a public hearing on the proposed municipal budget for the fiscal year two thousand and eleven. And item number ten eleven is consideration of calling for a public hearing to amend the sidewalk ordinance to include a variance process in appeal process. I want to tell the board that I think this is a very good idea to call for public hearings on these matters. In fact, I think the board should call for a lot more public hearings on a lot more matters. I think if the board had called for public hearings, for example, on the helmet and the tree ordinances, there have so many of us concerned over losses of our freedoms, a lot of the public outcry and bad press of the board has gotten over them would have been avoided. And maybe hearings were held. If so, I'm sorry, I did not hear about them in order to attend. I also noticed other items of today's board business that I think should have a public hearing before they got this far, to the point of actually being discussed and considered today in an actual board meeting. For example, item ten H calls for the discussion and consideration of the possible options for balancing the budget. Residents of Starkville realize that options for balancing the budget is often political ease for raising our taxes somehow. We want to be involved in all such discussions and considerations long before it reaches the stage it is in today of this board actually discussing and considering it without having gotten our input into it. Item ten J calls for discussion and consideration of a tax increase for the Star, City of Starkville fiscal year two thousand and eleven. I disagree with the gentleman that spoke earlier. As far as I'm concerned, residents of Starkville are taxed too much already, and indications are that we are about to be hit with more taxes from state and federal levels of government. We want to be involved in all such discussion and consideration of any other tax increase in Starkville long before it reaches the stage it is in today of this board actually discussing and considering it without our input into it directly. Item ten K calls for discussion and consideration of the outside contributions to be included in the fiscal year two thousand and eleven budget. Residents of Starkville realize that oftentimes outside contributions are often political ease for federal funding. We have, we may want the thing that the federal government funding may purchase for us, but we know that federal funding always comes with strings attached. We may not want the things that these strings will require of us to get the money. So we want to be involved in all such discussions and consideration of any outside contributions long before it reaches the stage it is in today of this board actually discussing and considering it without having gotten, having gotten our input. So in summary, I call on the board to have a public hearing on these items, and on all, every item that comes up from now on that will result in the board making any decision or establishing any ordinance policy or whatever that will affect the financial state and or the freedom of the residents of Starkville. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beamer. Further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move to public appearances. We have two public appearances scheduled tonight. First is by Jen Gregory with the VCC on the two percent budget, and your budget was approved.
Right, I don't, I don't even make comments.
Okay, we'll move to our second public appearance. Thank you.
(laughing).
Second public appearance by Jim Gafford and Bethany Stitch, who have been busy at work since they last visited us, getting a Tiger Two application together, and that application is due on August twenty-sixth.
The third.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Excuse me. Good thing I'm not submitting it.
We have actually put together a presentation that may help better illustrate what we're working on, so bear with me while we deal with the technical issues.
Help Jim.
We have an IT project.
Yeah, I might need assistance too. In fact, I might ask.
It's just a bunch of noise here.
(laughing).
Tiger Two, this is the EBR proposal. You should have seen, each of you in your packets weeks ago, the pre-propos, the information for pre-proposal applications. Some of this will hopefully be something you're somewhat familiar with, but we're going to go through what Tiger Two is and what we are proposing. The title for our proposal is Starkville, a model livable city for small-town America. What exactly is Tiger Two? Well, Tiger Two is a partnership between U.S. Department of Transportation and Housing and Urban Development for a discretionary grant program they put together. The funds are directed toward, specifically towards capital improvement, investment in service transportation, and planning, and the funds are going to be solely awarded on a competitive basis for projects that have a significant impact on the nation, metropolitan area, or, in our case, a region. And not less than one hundred and forty million dollars of the total funding available is directed towards projects in rural areas, which is defined by, and this funding notice in particular, is an area, not an urbanized area, as defined by the Census Bureau, and Starkville meets that qualification as well as the Golden Triangle Region. So I've had some discussion with some of you. We're only calling ourselves rural for the purposes of this grant. I know that may be somewhat of a dirty word. We are not really consider ourselves rural. We are an urban-
An urbanized area by the Census Bureau is fifty thousand plus. We're urban-centered.
Yeah. The selection criteria that we are diligently working through on our full proposal is going to be how this project is awarded, and those are four general categories of long-term outcome, job creation, economic stimulus, innovation, and partnership, with a lot of the material being in long-term outcomes, and we have to focus on state of good repair, economic competitiveness, livability, sustainability, and safety, and we have twenty-five pages to get all this information in. Why are we working on this? Well, if you've walked the streets of Starkville, and I've walked them extensively, we see things like this regularly, and that. This is a nice, impossible to get around if you're in a wheelchair area. We have lovely cow pads. These things are, they're not only problems for transportation, but they're also things that people come to our city, they're looking to invest, and they wonder why they would want to live here, or anybody would want to live here, and we see things like this. Obviously, this area needs a sidewalk. People are clearly walking there, but there's no, there's no safe way from the walk. And then the walk, the image on the left in particular, you're practically having to get into Highway one eighty-two to get around a bush in a cow path. It's just, it's just not safe.
Could I stop you for one question?
Certainly.
Oh, I guess it's right there in Ward One, some of this is right there on twelve, and I've often wondered how we could get a sidewalk on Highway twelve. Could this grant be used specifically? Would that be a way to get a sidewalk down Highway twelve?
Highway twelve is a-
Potentially, yeah. We'll get into the details of the grant, but yes, that's-
But this is one eighty-two. These two pictures are both one eighty-two.
These are one eighty-two, but the same situation, the same conditions exist in Ward One.
We have pictures as well. We just didn't think about this. (laughing).
So the description of the project, and of course, we have to focus on innovation, the idea is we are focusing on an experiential education for the Golden Triangle Region to become an innovative rural livable city community by transforming the current car-based infrastructure to a multimodal mecca with transit, bike lanes, sidewalks, multi-use paths, provide access to affordable housing, employment centers, and improved quality of life and a cleaner environment for everyone. What are we proposing? A comprehensive multimodal transportation network for the city of Starkville, particularly the city center of Starkville, that's going to include ADA sidewalks, bike lanes, a public transit service, and where appropriate to meet the needs of what we are proposing, potential utility relocation as well. We're also looking at as part of this, a regional comprehensive plan development, and we're including funding for that, will include not only Starkville University, but also Columbus and West Point as they relate to us, as well as the counties they reside in, so Toba, Alhams, and Clay County as well. So a true regional comprehensive plan. And the goal is to create a modern transportation infrastructure that's going to provide greater accessibility, increased mode share, increased economic development, greater community investment, improved aesthetics, and consolidated coordinated regional planning. As far as specifically the sidewalks, bike lanes, and multi-use paths, greater accessibility to the urban, to the urban core of the city will be provided through multi, multiple transportation modes, obviously, as well as connectivity to neighborhoods. Major retail employment centers and parks have all been designed into this. So it's really designed to touch the entire socioeconomic fabric of the city. Oh, and I'd also like to point at this point in time that we've had an extensive amount of help in developing this city staff. In particular, Mr. Kemp and Ms. Spruill have been quite willing to give up their time to help work on this. The transit portion of this is going to be designed around a fixed route, public transit service, to provide increased connectivity and obviously improve efficiency of the existing service, to provide increased connectivity and obviously improve efficiency of the existing transportation infrastructure. And it's going to be a model that's going to be designed upon the current MSU campus shuttle service, which is a fixed rate service, and as such, it should be maintained and managed by MSU Transportation Services. As far as regional planning goes, we're looking at planning from an economic development standpoint, land use planning, transportation infrastructure is obviously going to be portioned this with a goal of potentially the formation of a metropolitan planning organization if we can get everyone to the table and get our population count designed properly, and trying to capitalize on the strengths of our region instead of continuously fighting against each other. As far as the budget and the philosophy behind the budget, as we discussed in the previous presentation we made to you, the, the real concept behind this is, is not to find new ways to spend money we don't have, but leveraging investment we are already making in order to achieve something much greater. And as such, all the items that you see under here in our, in our budget summary are, for the match, are based upon monies that are already currently going to be spent. There is no new monies that have been identified in this. So just to summarize, we're looking at total matching funds between the paying partners for this, which is the city of Starkville, Mississippi State, Mississippi Department of Transportation, Oktobah County Hospital, and the Starkville, Greater Starkville Development Partnership on order of $4.3 million in matching funds, which will, based on the project, the proposal that we are putting together, lead to a project total of just shy of $20 million, 19.88 million total funds being requested in the $15.5 million range from, from U.S. Department of Transportation and Housing and Urban Development. To break down the city's match, the funding is coming from multi-use path projects that are already being, where funding is already being spent. These are going to include Pat Station Road Project and the Reed Road Project. These monies are already projected to be spent, and the projects have already begun, as well as the transportation capital improvement budgets for 2011 and '12, the Lewisville Street Project, and the budgets for the sidewalk improvements and ADA improvements. This time, I'd also like to extend a great deal of thanks to, to Ms. Sistrunk for her help with putting together this budget, and Mr. Kemp has also been quite helpful as well. The city's total match is around $2.8 million. Breaking down the project scope, we can look at various portions of this. I don't want to get into all of it, but specifically money going towards roads and sidewalks, we're looking at $11.8 million, which this money has to be spent in a two-year timeframe. So we're talking about spending an incredible amount of money on our streets than has ever been spent in the past, which is going to really lead to a transformation of how we fundamentally live in the city. This, you know, not including the transit services, but we just look at the roads and improvements of the road. And this does not only include sidewalk construction, but it's also a complete rebuild of Highway 182, if you will, which is going to mean sidewalk, a resurfacing of that street, the sidewalks and bike lanes on, on both sides of the street as well. And that's probably one of the, the central areas within this is going to be Highway 182. Just to give you a quick map, and I know it's probably hard to see everything that's in this, this is, if you look at all the highlighted routes or the different types of posed construction for sidewalks and/or multi-use paths, you can see that it, it really hits most of the major portions of the city. Resurfacing, restriping is very similar to that. It's, it's tying into almost every corner of the city, at least within the major city center as possible. And as part of this, we're also proposing potential utility relocation in areas that have, have been developed to the point where it's difficult to install proper transit services without doing this. So we're not looking at spending money on utility relocation for no reason. It's really because they have become essentially an impediment to the growth of our downtown area. Some of the highlights for the, for the proposal that we are putting together is going to really be looking at expansion of downtown to be bounded by Martin Luther King Drive and, and Lampkin Street, and then, of course, all the cross streets in there by relocating utilities out of line of sight, putting together not only functional but also somewhat decorative sidewalks, similar to what we have on Main Street currently, bike facilities, obviously, Transit Stop, Carben Gutter, and, and also we recommend moving buildings that are, that will be filled in as a result of this project through, we hope is going to be further investment in the city, to require those to be street-fronted buildings. We also would like to essentially expand, or maybe even create if it's not defined in this way, a medical services district along Hospital Road. We're already looking at improving Hospital Road, and there's been some pedestrian improvements there in the current rebuild that's going on at the time, but we'd like to leverage that to really transform this area into a place where people don't just go to the hospital, they can go to the hospital, they can go to the eye doctor, they can visit their dentist, and they can make a one-stop shop and maybe park a single time and, and visit all these places. And then also, of course, we'd like to provide family service to those. And then we're also proposing where it seems most appropriate, multi-use paths for biking and sidewalks instead of bike lanes and separated sidewalks. Part of this would obviously be the completion of the Lynn Lane Project, and really an extension of the Lynn Lane Project to connect to the Crossgate Shopping Center on Highway 12. I don't know if you're aware, but currently there is, there's no way in the city for someone to safely walk to a grocery store in our town, or bike to a grocery store safely in our town without getting on the Highway 182 or Highway 12. And I think that's, that's really unfortunate, especially if you consider that we have a large population of non-drivers. And then also, we're looking at a expansion, extension of Lynn Lane onto Industrial Park Road to connect to that, to connect to Lynn Lane Pro- the Lynn Lane Project as well as the, the Crossgate Shopping Center on Highway 12 portion of the sidewalks. The remainder of Highway 12, I don't know if you saw on the previous map, would most likely just be normal pedestrian-style sidewalks instead of multi-use paths, but this portion we felt was probably most appropriate to have a, a multi-use path. Just to, just to close out, I'm going to show you some renderings that we've recently done to kind of give you an idea of, of what this would possibly look like if, if we were to get the funding and actually consider doing some of the infill with development. This is Highway, this is Martin Luther King Drive at, at Jackson Street today, and this is potentially what it could look like. I think it's a pretty dramatic change. This is Lampkin Street today. If we did something like this, then you've got really creating a street escape, an environment that people want to be in. You're going to see more, some more retail development because people are going to want to be in those spaces. They're not just going to pull up to a place and shop, they're going to shop at, at one store, and then they can easily get to the next place, and it will be accessible to everyone. This is on Hospital Road. And this is probably the least dramatic of them all, but, you know, very, very simple changes that, that can make a big difference into, to our street aesthetics. And I believe that's all that I have. I know we have another opportunity to act with this in item A on our agenda now, but we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions or comments for the members of the board?
I had a couple. You said it was roughly $11.5 million we'd have to spend, we'd spend within a 24-month period, right?
Well, we would, we would have to spend the entire budget, the whole 19 points, but the 11 and a half, 11.8 is, is purely on roads and road sidewalks, bike lanes.
If you look at the bottom of the planning and administration side, the engineering and the administration is because we understand that as wonderful as Mr. Kemp is, that's a little bit extreme to ask him to do. So we, we did budget in additional support staff and help to.
That's what I said, most of this will be done by private contractors, beat it out.
Because of the timeline, I'm expecting that a lot of it will have to be contracted out, yes.
Would y'all be handling most of this process, or would it be Edward Kemp?
It would be up to the city to hire with $500,000 to hire someone to do so.
Once, Jim.
Do we actually have full-time jobs?
Really?
Well, once they get us through the grant process, that's the finish line for them. And we're very thankful for what they have helped us do because it's been a massive undertaking for them. And regardless of what happens with the grant, the, the information they pulled together will be very helpful for future planning efforts. All the members?
Yeah, I just want to echo, you know, this has been a tremendous effort, and it's, it's encouraging to me to see this coming out of the Transportation Committee and the effort put forward with this and the potential impact it could have. It's, I can't thank you enough for the work you've done, and can we name a street after them or something after they do that?
It hasn't been awarded yet. It is a very competitive process.
And I'll echo the thank yous, too, and say that I did very little other than identify line items in the budget where, where we're going to be spending monies anyway, and, and this is an opportunity to, to do something transformative for the community. I hope you're wildly successful. Introduce the dose of reality for us. Tell us how many people made it through to the, you made it past the preliminary stage. How many people made it through to the secondary stage?
You know, I, we don't, they didn't say. But, but this is, well, I think there are two answers, I guess. One is, the whole Tiger 2 project comes out of appropriations. So this is money that has already been appropriated to U.S. Department and HUD, so all of that has to be expended. But the thing about it is, is it's a national grant opportunity. So I would expect they will have tens of thousands of applicants. We have some good things, and I, this is awkward to say, we have some good things going for us. One is that we can use the rural designation, and we also can use the economically distressed designation. I think we've got some great potential with, we pulled up the data that Mississippi State has 24 different students from 24 different countries and every state in the Union, so it's not really just a Starkville or regional, but if we do this here as an experiential, educational experience, potentially we're impacting the next generation of all 50 states. So there's some things we can use and leverage to make us more competitive, and we're doing our best there. There's some other data that we're not quite finished with, that is, how many jobs will be created, what the benefit of all these are, and hopefully we'll get, we will get that done and get it put in the grant. And I think that combined with, with the need for something like that in the area, and I don't, I don't know how many of the members of the board know, but actually Richard Nixon had come down to this area and said, "You all need to work together as a region." So we've been trying to do this from the 70s without federal help, so we're going to certainly look at that.
Well, I, I appreciate it, and, and it's wonderful to see what our city could be if we're willing to make an investment in our community.
Is it, is it all or nothing, or is it partial, or?
No. It, it, all I, we have for information is what they did with Tiger 1, and there were a lot of projects at Tiger 1 where they came back and said, "We're not going to give you 65 million. What would you do with 20?" And so that is definitely a possibility if they stick with that.
Further discussion? Any further questions or comments?
What, what was the allocation listed on there for utilities? Was that for underground utilities or moving?
Lampkin has to be underground because there's no place for it to go.
Right.
And so, sanders are not toured around, and we looked at everything, and there's some like on university, the section of university that's not buried, some of it can simply be moved, which is substantially cheaper than burying. But Lampkin, anything that's right in that downtown core, to get it out of the sidewalk, it has to go underground.
Right.
And so we've worked very closely with Sandra and the utili- oh, sorry, Alderman, Sistrunk, and the electric department to identify where it's feasible to bury and where it's not, and, and what could happen. So it's promised nothing we could do.
And I would say that we're looking to, to achieve the desired result. I don't, I don't think that anyone cares if they're buried or not. It's what do we achieve a result that we're going after, and how do we best spend that money? And that's really what we're concerned with.
Right, and I was really just kind of clarifying whether that was just purely electrical utilities or if we were talking about any kind of water or.
No, no, it's, it's electrical and.
Okay.
Cable.
Cable, yes. It's wired.
Further questions, comments for the members of the board?
Can I move it through?
Well, it's on the agenda.
It's on the next, next.
It is the next item.
Hello, I'm Bill Green, TV Committee Chair for WOBV 5. In an effort to provide better service to you and your family, we have installed a new telephone line that will reach us whether we are in the office or away from the station. Our new number is 662-546-0510. Please call our station helpline anytime. If we're busy, please leave a message, and one of our staff will return your call just as soon as possible. Again, our new station helpline number is 662-546-0510. Thank you for watching WOBV 5, the station in the heart of the city.
If there are no further questions or comments, we'll just transition into board business, and, and this will be what was formerly item M on the Board Business Agenda, which is the consideration of approving the application for the Tiger 2 grant for the city of Starkville.
I move approval of the application for the Tiger 2 grant for the city of Starkville.
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Alderman Dumas to approve of the application for the Tiger 2 grant for the city of Starkville as presented. Is that your motion?
It is.
And seconded by Alderman Corey. Alderman Dumas, you wish to speak on the merits?
Thank you again.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Magic Quirrell passes.
Go right.
Thank you.
Go right.
Let me interpret my agenda for a second here. That takes us to item H, right?
Yeah, item H.
Okay, that, that gets us to the budget. And I guess some, some updates before we get into this discussion. It's hard to believe it is true, the, the budget picture has, has worsened significantly since our work session last Wednesday, and of course, we know that the picture was, was fairly bleak last Wednesday. At this time during budget season, the budget product is, is very much a moving target, and, and a couple of things have happened that have changed the financial outlook to negatively impact the budget since last Wednesday. First, the utilities contribution, which Alderman Sistrunk had presented a model where that, that could be raised by as much as $400,000. It, it does not work that way. Specifically, that is based on reimbursement for energy that we loo- that we use. The state statute allows us to not be responsible for utility fees to our own utility services. However, that is the extent of what's allowed in that transfer. After going back through our payouts to electric and water last year, the city clerk, chief administrative officer, and Mr. Haddaway determined that there is not $400,000 worth of reimbursable revenue there. That, that figure is about $200,000. So that, that's $200,000 that's not there. Additionally, in computing our, our available funds for capital improvements next year on the road improvement schedule we had set last year, an additional $324,000 was lost. The reason being, that funding had been counted twice in, in previous budgeting efforts. It had been placed both in the general fund and in projections for capital improvement funds. That money only exists once, so it results, if we are going to maintain our pace that we've set on the road improvement fund, which I think is a must, it results in a net $324,000 loss in what we were projecting in the general fund. So taking all that into account and taking all of the feedback that we got in the work session into account, I sat down late last week with Alderman Sistrunk and asked if she could prepare some options that incorporated all of the feedback that we had at the work session last Wednesday. And she has done that as a way of perhaps having the discussion in a, in, in a more holistic fashion, been going through a series of, of line items. Alderman Sistrunk, would you like to take us through what you've worked up?
I will, I will, and I'll echo that budgeting is never easy. When funds are short, budgeting becomes incredibly difficult. We have heard and taken heart, all the comments that were made at our work session here at, at our board meetings, there, we have heard and taken all of that into account. By way of background, y'all should know that, that through the years in, in prior budgeting processes, there was as much as a million dollars built into our operating budget that was not funded, and we saw that that was paid for by using up our savings account, our ending fund balance. So that money is now gone. We, we addressed that over the last two years by cutting out more than a million dollars in operating expenses from our general fund. in operating expenses from our general fund. There's no way to cut that much money from a 16...what was a 16 million-plus-dollar budget to a 15.2 million-dollar budget without affecting services. So when someone on the board or someone from the, the community speaks and says, "These are services that, that should be provided to the citizens," they're right. The, the problem is, we simply don't have the money to do those things. Certainly not all at once. Something like Carver Drive will take us years to accomplish at our, at our current budgeting levels. In, in addition to that background information, um, I don't know if y'all know or remember that the board had, had several meetings where we talked about a strategic plan, about what our vision for the city is, what sort of services we can provide to the community, how we could be more efficient as a government, that sort of thing. Um, the, the project that Jim and Bethany just finished presenting to us is revelatory in terms of what we can look like as a community if we work together and if we're willing to, um, to, to spend money on our community. And, and I ask you to remember that when we talk about our city budget. We're not talking about federal dollars. We're not talking about state dollars. We're talking about dollars that are gonna be spent here in Starkville. The bulk of the revenues are gonna be generated here. They're gonna be spent here. And, and they're, they're gonna impact your life and my life. Okay. All that said, all that said, um, there's a worksheet that the, the board has, and I'll be glad to share with any of y'all. And I'm gonna start with Option Three, which is the option where we have no tax increase, no fees of any sort to anybody. We cut outside contributions by $100,000. And when I say we cut outside contributions by $100,000, that means that we cut monies to the Humane Society, which means that there...I hate to use the puppies' argument, but there...the, the Humane Society will have difficult decisions to make if we cut their budget significantly. We cut money to the library. The discretionary item in the library's budget is books. So what we say when we cut funds to the library is that we will not buy books. Um, we, we cut money to the horse park. That's a separate argument. Let me, let me save that one. Uh, we cut money to the charitable groups that we give money to as a city. The Boys and Girls Clubs, the National Guard. There, there are series of...the Starkville Arts Council. These are, these are going...if, if we make that decision, these are gonna dramatically impact those organizations and their abilities to operate. Those are the things that make our community more than just a place to live. They are what makes us what we are. So in, in Option One, there, there's no increase in, in revenues other than just the organic growth that we have and the utilities reimbursement. Cutting outside contributions and also allowing, um, the parks budget to be funded by the 2% money that was intended to be set aside as debt service for the bonds used to pay the sports...to, to pay the sportsplex bonds, uh, but instead to use those for operations. That, that is $735,000. If we reduce that for the debt service related to the, to the bonds, the road bonds that we talk about, and some other budget issues that have to be addressed, things that we, we, we can't, uh, that we underbudgeted this year that we've got to, to deal with next year, that is $359,000. So that leaves us less than $400,000 to spend on anything new or different this coming year. It, it's, it's our fiscal responsibility to begin to reestablish our savings account, our ending fund balance. This only allows us to put $50,000 back into that ending fund balance, which is, in, in the world of city government, to me, it's a lot of money. To the city, it's, it's very little, and, and there's very little that, that you can do with $50,000. It establishes a contingency budget of $50,000. That allows us to be reactive to things that we had not planned for in the budget process. And all of you who have a family budget know that at some point during, during a budget cycle, something comes up that you had not planned for. Um, in tonight's packet, we are, uh, helping to fund the game day shuttle. A, a great program. The funding is sourced in, in the packet, says it would come from this contingency budget line. If, if it doesn't come from there, there's, there's, there's no place for it to come from. Um, we would begin, begin to, to minimally staff or equip Fire Station Five. We would only have about $48,000 to put to Fire Station Five in this scenario. That, that's one fireman, one turnout gear, one little bit of...it, it, it really doesn't even begin to, to staff Fire Station Five. It allows us to purchase some software for the city clerk's office and some hardware that, that's needed in the city to allow us to, to take advantages of some technological advances that have happened in the last 20 years that we have just not embraced. We have hired people, we push paper, but we're not efficient in, in using technology in that regard. This, this software will allow the city clerk's office to, to potentially continue to operate at the same staffing level as the city continues to grow. We either buy software and make that commitment, or we know that as we grow, we're gonna have to, to hire additional staff. It, um, includes a provision for sirens, a, a basic public safety issue, and one that's been brought up repeatedly by Mr. Turner, and rightfully so. This doesn't...this finances the sirens. It doesn't give us the money to, 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 to pay for this in one year. This is an ongoing financing project of the sirens. Um, it does not have any salary adjustments for any city employees in it. It, we have, um, it, it has two new people in it. Um, and, and we don't have to decide tonight what those two new people look like. But the two new people would be an IT person. We have one IT person right now, and he keeps things running. But we had someone who spoke a few weeks ago about, um, not having the minutes online. We simply don't have the person that can monitor that and make sure that happens. Mr. Burnham tonight talked about some sort of public relations providing information. That should be available on the internet, perhaps even go into something like the Maroon Alert Plan that they have on campus, where emails would go out to citizens. We don't have the staff or the resources to do those kind of things. And we live next to a major university with an emphasis in technology. It would also hire somebody in our building planning, community development department. And again, we don't have to decide what that person looks like, but we have to acknowledge that there is a need in that area for additional personnel. We, we...in this scenario, we have $85,000. That's obviously not enough to hire two people. Um, our enterprise funds would help fund that because they would benefit from those services as well. So they would help fund that. It has $32,000 in it for municide code, which is our code of ordinances, to keep that online so that those ordinances are available to anybody in the city who wants to research what current ordinances are. It has $12,000 in it for an expanded design charrette for the Mississippi Main Street Program that the, um, partnership is going to pay the membership for. That's a process that will involve the entire community in, in talking about what we look like, what we want to look like going forward. It has $10,000 in there for a performance management, um, program that we'd like to participate in that starts to give us some measurable feedback about how we're functioning as a city. It would survey citizens. We, we would get some feedback about where you think we need to, to be focusing our efforts. It would allow us to compare ourselves to other communities and know, are we doing well, are we not doing well? This, this speaks directly to Ms. Veemer's comments about getting input from, from the citizens. And it also acknowledges that we're gonna have that municipal complex conversation again, but it barely acknowledges that. It, it has $20,000 in it for whatever's involved in that, whether it's, um, doing a little refurbishing of the old Starkville Electric Building so that we can use it temporarily to relieve some of the crowding that we have here, whether it's land options, whether it's copies for meetings with the public. That's...that is all we can do with the...without a fee increase in some area or a tax increase. And that's not very much, and, and I hope that that is not an option the board will consider. The second option, the revenues all stay the same except that it implements an environmental services program, which we talked about last year. Again, tonight, we don't have to decide exactly what that looks like, although there is an org chart with a proposal for what that looks like. This would allow us to coordinate all of our external services. Sanitation, rubbish, landfill, landscaping. Coordinate all those services in one place. Try to provide the best possible service, um, that, that we can. It would involve a fee increase, and, and it would be about $2.50 a month. That would get us our sanitation fee to $13, which is very much in the low end of community averages throughout North Mississippi. Uh, Mr. Parker's done some pretty extensive research there, and I don't think you found anybody that was under $13, except for us, did you? Or not significantly below $13.
What, 12 was the lowest?
12, 12. And, and that was in Aberdeen, and, um, so that's the only... That would be the only revenue increase. What that changes is, it allows us to fund a little more of the outside contributions, but there would still be cuts to the Humane Society, to the library, to the arts programs, to the, to the Girl Scouts, to the, uh, Starkville Reeds, to the Boys and Girls Clubs, to the National Guard, those sorts of things.
Can I stop you for one? Of these three options with the outside contribution cut, is, is any of these just a flat?
Percentage?
Not really.
It's, 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 it's my best guess at how we could spread that equitably amongst, amongst those.
So if maybe somebody's getting a $500 contribution, they just...
They'd go to 400, where somebody who was getting a $5,000 contribution would go to 4,000, so...
Most of them are 10%.
Most of them are gonna be at, at, yeah, 10% or more.
It's 20%.
Yeah, that's 20%, but, but even in the next option, it's, it's 10% or more. Um, it gives us more money to dedicate to Fire Station Five. Um, it, it gives us...it gets us up to $188,000, which will staff one shift and begin to pay for turnout gear and the equipment that you need for that, for that fire station. Um, it allows us to buy a little bit more in terms of software and equipment. It does not change anything else on the board. The last option, and, and the one that would be...will be hard for the board to embrace, but it, it, in my opinion, and I, I know that we're gonna hear the argument from both citizens and board that we do not need to increase taxes. We do not need to increase fees. But it really is more a ma...it is more than a matter of making our dollars out equal our dollars in. It is...or probably I should say that the other way. More than making our dollars in equal our dollars out. It, it's a matter of what do we want to look like as a community? What services do we want to provide, um, as a community? The tax increase that I have, I have in here is enough to, to fully staff one shift at Fire Station Five, refurbish a fire truck for Fire Station Five, and provide the operating expenses for Fire Station Five. Um, it also adds a little bit back to those outside contributions, but there will still be cuts to those outside contributions. It allows us to put more money in our ending fund balance, only $75,000, though. And it allows us to have a slightly larger contingency budget, only $75,000. And that sounds terrible to say, only $75,000. But those are, those are not big dollars. It increases a little bit more for equipment and software, and it allows a 1% increase for staff. The reason we had talked about an increase for staff, the primary driver for an increase, um, to, to city staff is that they have all received a de facto 1.75% pay cut when PERS changed the funding requirement to increase the individual contribution from 7.25% to 9%. I, I know, again, like I said, I know that that's not a, a popular option, but it's...it is a question of what do we want to be as a community? None of these, none of these begin to fully address the issues that face us over the next years. That it will take us a half a million dollars a year to operate Fire Station Five. What do you get out of Fire Station Five, you ask? Because you don't live near Fire Station Five? Our fire rating is related to where our fire stations are and how they're staffed. That fire rating impacts your fire...your fire...the fire insurance component of your homeowner's insurance. So we can not fund fire stations if we like, but you will see it in an increase in your, your homeowner's insurance. Um, it doesn't begin to, to, to address that $500,000 that's needed for that. It doesn't begin to address the two fire trucks that we're gonna have to replace to keep our, um, our fire rating where it is. We would have to finance those. A, a best guess of what we would need to budget each year to finance those is $250,000. It doesn't fully capitalize the street and the drainage issues that we have throughout the city. It, um, doesn't address any, um, internal or external salary inequities that we have. Uh, Mr. Boyd has identified about $43,000 of internal salary inequities we have. And our overall general fund salary inequities are estimated to be about 10%, which is nearly 3/4 of a million dollars. We, we just pretend that those things are not there if we don't have that, that conversation about how are we gonna fund these things. We can make this budget balance. We cannot increase fees, and we cannot increase taxes. But when we do those things, we directly impact the services that are delivered to you, to the citizens of, of our community. Um, and one more time, these, these are not just financial decisions. These are policies, decisions, that talk about what we want to be as a community, as a community. And from there, I'm gonna turn it back to the mayor and let him guide our discussion. These are...and these are difficult discussions. We, we understand, we understand. These are difficult discussions.
Yeah. And Alderman Vaughn?
I got one question on the library. We were talking about the library. You said the biggest cost is books.
No, no, not their biggest co...not their biggest cost, their discretionary cost. When they start cutting things in their budget, um, they can't not turn on the lights. They can't not have their staff there. Where, where they, where they cut their budget is, is books.
Am I reading this right? The salary there, $272,000. Am I reading this right? How many people staff there for a salary to be like that?
I, I use the library. I don't know how many of the people here at the board use the library. I help fund those late fees, by the way. Um, I, I would say, and I don't know this for sure, there, there may be... There's no more than 10 people who work there.
What, $272,000 salary?
Eight to 10.
That's about an average.
That's, that's an average of...if there are 10 people, that's less than $27,000 a person. I, I don't know how many people work there, though, Mr. Vaughn. I, I don't. I know that there are not what I would appear...what I would say appears to be excess staff there. Oh, and I forgot to say, and I apologize. In Option One, we do not fund the horse park at all. We, we all have heard the presentations...I'm sorry, Option Three, we do not fund the ho...horse park at all. We've all heard the presentations about the economic impact of the horse park, and it is tremendous to our community. In Option Two, we fund it at $50,000, which is a $20,000 cut from this current year. And in Option One, the, the, the most expensive of the options, uh, we, we fund them at their full $70,000. Everything that we cut to another organization impacts their budget. So we're not just impacting your city services. We're impacting the services you receive from these other entities as well. I'm sorry, I've been on a soapbox.
Alden Carver?
First of all, thank you to Alderman Sistruck and everything you've done. And, um, you know, these are tough times. This, this is a time that I, I normally don't even like to say the words tax increase and put them together, and I'm not in favor of it either way. But, you know, something has to be done when, when our ending fund balance is dropping as, as low as it has been over the last couple of years. And then, um, so, you know, a couple of things I wanted... When you start... start talking about a mileage rate increase in, in your option one, is, is this tax increase over our allowable tax increase to 280,000?
I'm, I'm going to ask Ms. Outlaw and Ms. Frue, but I, I think this is well within the amount that we, we can increase.
Well, the 280,000, it looks to be less than 2,000, so that would be, I think we're at 1.95 if we can, or 1.?
Well, maybe a little bit less than 1.95 based on the system.
The current.
But 2 and maybe lower than that.
Any reason that number was chosen?
It's the, it's the same amount as a fire station. And that's what's needed for, really what's the bare minimum of a fire station.
For one shift, one shift, not, not fully staffing, one shift. We'd have to decide when the best time was to have people there and staff that one shift.
If, if you want a brief recap of how we got into this situation, and I, I think this budget outlook is objectively bad, doesn't matter how you look at it. For two years, reserve funds were, were built heavily into the budget. So then last year, the reserve funds were all gone. So that left us with trimming nearly a million dollars out of the budget. Once you take a million dollars out of a budget that was in around $16 million, there is almost no operational room left for anything. I mean, we, we saw some serious cuts last year in the form of hiring freezes, not buying herbicide so that we can keep the, the, the rideaway from looking overgrown early in the season. There, there were some major cuts that, that everybody absorbed as a part of that budget last year. So we're left with that product and the straw that, that breaks the camel's back this year is we have an opportunity that we're very grateful that we had to get a million dollar fire station built with grant money. And it was a fire station that's very much needed, but now you have the owner's task of trying to staff up a fire station and just the bare minimum to put one shift on in that fire station throws an additional $280,000 in the budget. That is a total game changer in a budget that was hanging by a thread in the first place. So that, that's how we got to this point.
I, I, I'd like to say that just after we were elected, I, I spoke to somebody who was intimately familiar with the city budget process, and he said that the biggest problem this board would have is that we have no money. I didn't understand fully what he meant at, at that time, but as we have learned more about city finances, and it has been an educational issue, and I think it's an issue that we need to educate the public about too. The truth of the matter is, is Mayor Wiseman says, we, we are at a point where we don't have, we don't have the funds that we need to provide the services that, that we need to provide.
Alden Carrver?
What is the deal with the, the old Starfield Electric building? Is that something we could possibly sell? Has that been an option? I mean, it's got to be worth.
It's not going to do anything for the budget outlook. You, you could potentially sell it down the road and have some, some revenue, but it's not an event you can budget for right now.
You have to have a certain degree of assurance that you're going to realize this and I'm not, I'm not sure that there, that it would sell that.
You've got to have a current appraisal, which, which we don't have. That, that's the first part of it, but that's only half of the equation because appraisal just tells you what fair market value is, doesn't mean somebody will actually buy it for that. So you've, you would either have to make a very conservative estimate as to what you thought you could sell it for, that you thought was safe enough to put in a budget, or you would have to wait until you had cash in, in hand to budget it.
Alden Carrver? Just for the record, these $85,000 for the new personnel, that, I don't know the answer, I'm just asking. That's $85,000 roughly for both individuals plus the benefits, how much do you actually expect?
This, this is what we think the general fund would bear of those two positions, salary and benefits.
And, and the, I guess the enterprise fund department heads have agreed to contribute to that to make up the benefit?
Enterprise funds would receive service from those positions, so there's an opportunity to, to share the expenses up with enterprise funds.
Situation with the contingency fund and, and our unit fund balance right now is around in the 200,000 range?
Yes.
That's pretty extremely low, I mean, considering just, what is one of our two-week payrolls? I mean, is it?
Ms. Outlaw? What is a two-week payroll for the general fund?
Oh, I, I'm pretty close to that 200,000 if not above it.
So I'd agree we need to be building the contingency fund if nothing else. And our bonding attorney has suggested what percentage?
They would say five at a minimum. The, the bond attorney hasn't given us a percentage. I guess they would be, in, industry standards, it would be five at a minimum for a, a government fund now.
Which would be 750 to 800,000.
750,000.
Again, this one was at 2.5 million three years ago.
And I think that's important, no distress. In two years, three years, we've gone from 2.5 million dollars as an ending fund to 230,000 dollars.
And that was the beginning of the budget prob, prob, problem that we're in right now, is you were plugging one-time revenue in the form of your reserves into your general budget. And then by the time we sat down to go through this process last year, we had a budget that had been built out to revenues of over $16 million and we had in the neighborhood of 15.2 million dollars that we would have available to spend. So to y'all's credit, going through a very difficult process last year, y'all cut nearly $1 million out of the general budget for the city of Starfield. And it, it has leant long and, and it probably could have leant long another year without some of these extraordinary events that we had, the, the, the chief one being having to staff new fire stations.
Do we kind of get a direction on?
Yeah, and I guess my thought in asking Alderman Sistrunk to put together some wholesale options based on the, the combinations of different options you have, is, is to give y'all a, a starting point to move a direction with the budget. Because what really has to happen now is the staff, the city clerk's office needs some direction on how to start plugging in the budget now, because we, we, we don't have that yet and we can't have that until we know what the fundamentals of this budget are, are going to be.
And one thing we've, one thing we have not said and, and I need to say clearly is that each of the department's budgets is, in, in, in all these scenarios, is the same as it was last year. So there are no increases in, in any departments. They can shuffle between line items, but there are no increases and I'm so sorry.
Alden Carrver?
With the implementation of the environmental services program, would there be an additional staff needed or would it be, would the additional duties go solely to sharing boards?
Are, are you talking about a department head?
I'm, I'm asking if, yeah, if you're going to have to hire an additional assistant for Ms. Boyd, would she require a salary increase or something of that nature?
There would, at a minimum, be a salary increase that's associated with it. You're, you're adding additional duties that, that would necessitate a, a salary increase.
Alden Carrver?
Mr. Mayor, I want to speak on that point right now. Mr. Mayor, could I get you to tell me and the public exactly what are the specific reasons that this environmental services department is being proposed? I don't get the logic of it as to, as to the things that we're, you're trying to do. I want a specific reason, that's all I want to know right now.
Yes, and of course, this is something that we have been discussing for seven months.
I understand that, I want to know.
And the, the thought with an environmental service division is to bring in all of our rubbish, garbage disposal services and services that get at the, the general cleanliness and appearance of this city into a streamlined environmental services department. And it was my understanding that it has been the thinking of this board that such a streamlined department would, would help us in ensuring that this city looks its absolute best and people's garbage and rubbish is, is, is maintained as effectively and as efficient, efficiently as possible.
Mr. Mayor, let me say this. Back some years ago, we had a public services, a public works department. The public works department was renamed to public services and the name means what it says, to give services to the public. One of the main goals of the public services department was to have a landscape division, litter control, to provide a better aesthetic appeal for the city of Starfield. Now what the mayor, and this, this is in all due respect professionalism, but this is something that we need to articulate for the public's information. Now, it, that does not add up to me quite. We already have a public service department with landscape and landfill. One of the key reasons for the landscape department was to have a, a greater aesthetic appeal for the city of Starfield. So now the proposal that's before this board and before this city is, is to, now, you have to look through this agenda, now they, you know, have to look through this agenda item, how it is worded. It says to reorganize this sanitation department, but it doesn't reorganize it, in my opinion. It creates another department. This is just that, you have to read through this kind of stuff. See now, if you're going to reorganize sanitation, you keep the sanitation department and bring additional duties in the sanitation department, but that's not what's being done. You have to read through the fine print here. Now what's happening is, is, is obviously a belief and conception that the public service is not doing its job. Why do I say that? Because if, if there's a conception that the public service is doing its job, you would not try to reorganize public services. So this proposal does not only try to reorganize or, or you reshift some duties here in, in sanitation and, and, but also in public services. To change this, you're saying that, well, we're not satisfied with the litter control over in the public services. We want to put into sanitation. What is the environmental services department going to do differently than what the public service is now doing? You're going to have the same division head. If you have a question about productivity, efficiency, let's, let's deal with that. Now here you have a proposal on the table to reorganize a depart, well, not reorg, no, it's not no reorganization, it's to create and establish a department, but you want to do it at the expense of the taxpayers. There is going to be a rate increase. How we get to be more conservative, let's, let's cut out some of all this, this bureaucracy. Let's cut out some of this spending. We don't need a, a environmental services department. If, if sanitation, you want to reorganize it, reorganize sanitation. But this is not no true reorganization. If the public services, the landfill and the landscape divisions are not doing their job, let's deal with that issue. You don't just have this radical liberal change with government just to bring about greater efficiency and productivity. We don't need to do that. I think that we need to eliminate this proposal and stay with the sanitation and another thing. It is my opinion that you cannot keep the same department head going into a new department. The board, if it creates and establishes an environmental services department, you're going to have to advertise for a brand new position. You know, and, and on this chart that was on the table, matter of fact, this should have been our package so we had time to study it, but on the table, it proposes to put Ms. Boyd, I'm not speaking for, against it, Ms. Boyd, but I'm saying is, you cannot put an existing employee in a newly created department. We are an equal opportunity employer. We do not discriminate on the basis of race, sex, color, creed, disability or nationality. We have, have to give all persons an equal opportunity to, to apply for this. And since I have the floor, Mr. Mayor, let me go a step further. In regard to outside contribution, we need to zero that line item. Back on May the 2nd of 1995, I was against the horse park then, and I'm against it 15 years later. On May the 2nd, 1995, I didn't make no strong public stance against, but I voted present, which registered my opposition. When that vote came across this table on the second day of May of 1995, the board voted to contribute an amount up to, up to $130,000 for a period of three years, three years, three years, to help with the operational costs of the multipurpose agricultural building. And we've been giving them money, according to my research, ever since fiscal year 1999, which began on October 1, 1998. The city has given the horse park $836,237.85. We must have, have a stopping point. It's just like the, the industries when they come in. We give them a tax abatement for 10 years because we welcome their presence, we're glad they're here, they're here for economic development, but we don't continue them after the, the 10th year. We have to show, in my opinion, real leadership and we do that by eliminating these outside contribution. Now that's what we need to do. We don't need to increase taxes. The, the distinguished resident from, from Ward III said that we are taxed enough. You know, we wonder how we can be more conservative, let's start putting a zero on some of these line items. Let's, let's not have a rate increase for sanitation. If we raise taxes at this time, we're going to have a chilling effect, in my opinion, on getting a municipal complex. There is a lot of tax in this environment. We read today's Starfield News and we hear about the candidate, in the Starfield News the headline is, the supervisor of mom on a tax increase. We're going to weigh all our options. We know what that, what that smells like, what that sounds like. You know, we have to take a stance. They register, we're told maybe a dollar and something on $100,000, but the, there are a lot of people in my ward and throughout the city who cannot afford this. We know we got to have city services. We know things are needed, but we just have to work within our framework. Now we don't have not had a million dollar fund balance over the years. I don't think we can afford to have, you know, it's good to have a contingency fund balance, a, a land item, it's good to have extra money in the reserve, but we can't afford to do 50,000 here and 50,000 there. Now let's cut out these outside contributions, let's look at some more of these things we can cut. You know, and, and we need to discuss all these things together as opposed to them being on a separate item tonight because, you know, the, the way they're on the agenda is not good, just like Alderman Vaughn said at the beginning of the meeting. You know, we, we have things like the, like the land lane project, but you have the Carver Drive ditch, nobody wants to talk about. You got the two pipes out there that have almost rushed it out. The board approved the Carver Drive ditch back on, on the, in one of the earlier meetings in February of this year. And then we were told that we're going to wait until it, it gets dry, we're going to wait until it gets hot. Well, how hot do you expect to get? The humidity index has been high. The humidity index has been high. Do you want to wait till it rain again? That's what we're trying to do. If you're interested in something, you'll get it done. We don't pass May, we don't pass June, we don't pass July, we're, August is about to get away. We have to show some leadership and get these projects done, city of Starfield. The people in Carver Drive, yes, they are tired of waiting, they want that ditch done. And, and $20,000 a year, if that's what it takes, we'll get to the finish line. That's not going, going to break the budget, but yet we can continue to talk about a, a multi-use path on, on, on the other side of town. We can talk about, about the bicycle lane, but since when we talk about the Carver Drive ditch, we get told discomfort. We need a prescription. We need to make sure that we, that we defeat this tax increase, we need to zero this line item. I'm not in favor of either one of these options. I'm not going to vote for any budget this year. I'm not going to vote for any budget this year that has any tax increase. I'm not going to vote for any budget that has anything for outside contribution. It's time to take a stand. The Harsh Park, we appreciate you. You've done a great job. We, we thank you. It was the board intent just to help them get started. That's why, back in 1995, I knew that if, if the board voted it, that's why I voted present back then, because I knew if you start something, they're going to expect it to continue. And you see, the three years ended back on May 2nd of 1998, and here we are today on this, on this, on the, on the 16th, 17th day of August of 2010. So, Mr. Mayor, I urge that we defeat the Environmental Services because we can accomplish the same thing. Mr. Devlin, that's why his department was renamed from, from the Department of Public Works to Public Services. There was some interest back in 1998. I remember the time when, when they said, "Well, we need to, to, to have a landscape." The then-mayor, who is now deceased, talked about, "We have aesthetic appeal." The money was spent, so we can have the litter, talk about the litter control. We got people in place. We got people. We don't need no Environmental Services. Ms. Boyd is getting the garbage picked up. They run every day. They run on Saturdays. They get non-conforming. The landfill is being operated through public service. What you're trying to say, Mr. Devlin's department is lacking in some manner or way? Because basically, you're not just affecting the sanitation. You're affecting Public Services. Come in reorganizing the sanitation. You're also reorganizing Public Services. You're taking two divisions from, from, from Public Services Department. We don't need that. That's not the way to operate government. We need to, to defeat this. We need to zero the land item contributions. We need to make sure we fund the, the, the Carver Drive ditch. And this matter of the Lynn Lane, you know, that's something that probably can wait. We can discuss that later. But we need to make sure that, that, Mr. Mayor, that we adopt this budget, we don't, you know, without that tax increase. And I think we can, we can get it done, you know, basically throughout the years. When it gets this time of year, there's always become some, some fear about, you know, what if, I mean, we had never had to operate this city without anybody getting paid. There's going to be enough money to pay, to pay the staff. We just need to quit, quit expanding the size of government. That's what we need to stop doing. So with all those, that being said, I know I say a lot, but that's what I'm elected to do. You know, as long as I'm on this board, whether, whether I'm liked or whether I'm disliked, I'm going to represent the people of Starkville until I am no longer a member of this board. So, you know, this takes tough leadership. I'm not up here for my health. I'm up here to, to make a real difference. I know you all are. But I have to say this when I have the floor, and that's why I speak so fervently, because I'm concerned about the well-being of the, of my constituents and all the citizens of the city of Starkville. And, Mr. Mayor, for those reasons and things, I'm going to ask that we defeat these proposals on the tax increase and the Environmental Services, and I yield the floor, Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion. Any further discussion about members of the board? Further discussion.
For the, for the sake of a vote and to give the city clerk's office some direction, I, I would move that we consider option one. I, I know that, and I'll state that motion in just a second. I know that Mr. Perkins says that it takes real leadership not to increase taxes or increase a fee in, in a department. Actually, I think it's easy not to do that. It, it's easy to, to say we're not going to do anything more for the city. It, it's hard to sit up here and say, "I, I think your taxes need, I think my taxes need to be raised so that we can be the community we want to be." And we're talking about $280,000 spread out over the entire city of Starkville. No, no one person has to bear that. And again, this really is an issue of what do we want to look like as a community. All that said, I move that we direct the-
I got a question. Won't you make the motion, Ms. Mayor?
Hold on. She's got the floor.
I move that we direct the city clerk's office to develop a budget to be presented for a public hearing on September 7th, or at the first board meeting in September, using the assumptions outlined in option one.
All right. Motion is to direct the city clerk's office to prepare a budget to be presented to the Board of Alderman on September 7th, using the assumptions outlined in option one of the handout presented. Is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Do you wish to speak on the mayor?
I think we've all spoken enough of the mayor.
Alderman Vaughn, did you have something?
I, I got something. You know, we keep talking about a tax increase. If a tax increase is used wisely and spread it among all the citizens, it'll make a difference. But it's not going to be done. We know it's not, because you're looking at Carver Drive ditch. It's not going to be done wise and not going to be spread away. It's not going to be treated fairly. It's not going to be treated equally. It's not going to be. And we sitting here fooling ourselves like it going to be done. We know it's not going to be done, because it's already not being done. And we sitting here fooling ourselves like that. For that reason, I would not vote for it.
Alderman Davis.
I, I guess just to ask Alderman Vaughn, what, since, since we are the board here, how, how is it not being distributed fairly and equally?
I don't, I don't have to explain it. You can see with your own eyes. Just look across, look across town.
No, I, I don't, I don't see that.
You just look across town. You're not blind.
I've still got the floor. I, I want to, I mean, can you explain that? Because I don't understand that.
If it's treated fair, why Carver Drive ditch been like that 20 years, and we still sitting here debating, talking about a little by a little, little by you, little by little, but you want to allocate money to go anywhere else? But why you can't just fix this ditch like you just go and fix anything else and be through with it?
Is Carver Drive ditch the only thing that we're discussing in this matter? I mean, look at what we're doing to Reed Road, and, and y'all want to talk about Lynn Lane. I mean, you know, and, but look at the infrastructure improvements that we're making to everybody in the north part of town, even in my ward, and I'm, and I'm trying to understand this fairly and equally thing, and I, I just don't understand that at all. You know, I think one of the things that, that's really interesting is that we can sit here and we can talk about the fact that we've gone from $2.5 million in an ending fund balance. We've had our bonding attorney sit here, and we can talk about the size of government. We can do whatever we want to, but the only, I mean, municipal government, we know operates, I mean, we have to borrow money. It's just the fact of the matter. I mean, anybody can tell you that. You've gone through municipal government training. And when we've got a bonding attorney to sit here and say that we're fixing to lose our rating and lose our benefit of being able to even approach a bond because we don't have near enough money in our ending fund, I don't know how else we increase revenue, you know, and, and to sit here and think about where, it, it appalls me to read the county, and, and now I've, I've spent the afternoon looking at what the county's doing, and I can understand what they're doing because I see what they're doing. But I think it's important to note that, that the city's ad valorem collection is $3.5 million. Those same citizens of the, of the city are paying $8 million in ad valorem taxes to the county. So when you look at that comparison and you think of the city services that we get as a city from the county, what's interesting about that? It's very interesting to me because we roughly get somewhere in the neighborhood of $500,000 a year from the county for road improvements, other improvements, but yet we give them more than two times what we collect ourselves in ad valorem taxes. And I'm sorry, but city services has to be something we look at. You know, the city of, the, the people of the city of Starkville, here's some numbers. There's 24,000 people, 2,000 non-census numbers in the city. It's 44,000 people countywide. So when you do those numbers, a person in the city pays roughly $143 to the city in ad valorem taxes, but a person in the city pays $328 annually to the county. But we don't get anything farmed except that $500,000 that doesn't go too far when we look at the infrastructure of the city. Interesting numbers there. Now, something else, considering I'm the chair of the Comprehensive Planning Committee. I went back and looked at the 2005 Comprehensive Plan. There were 12 significant findings of the Comprehensive Plan. The first one, the city should consistent, should be consistent and diligent in enforcing regulations. In that, it talks about staff. We've done some in that. We've done poorly in others. It's, it's city service. Significant finding two, city should be, or city should get new and better regulations to help with identified problems. You know, it goes through this, but the interesting thing is, is on number 11. Significant finding number 11, the city struggles to develop a budget each year and is operating with one of the lowest millage rates in the state. It needs to develop new sources of revenue, capitalize on existing sources, and provide public facilities as efficiently as possible. That's 2005 recommendation. In 2007, we've already determined we had $2.5 million in the bank. Now we're at $230,000. If this same consultant came into the city, went through the public process that helped put all this stuff together, would come through, I would hate to see what her significant finding would be when we have an ending fund balance of $230,000, much less the fact that we are a growing community, the fact that we've expanded city services. Well, we annexed considerable lands in 1998, and I know those are enterprise funds that pay for that, but I think there's, there's a significant parallel between the way we have distributed city services to those annexed areas and the way we've operated our general fund. But yet we want to sit back and talk about how we can nickel-and-dime this thing to everything we can. We took everything we could last year from city departments, and yet we're asking them to baseline that and even go even further from the standpoint of how we do it. I, I don't understand, I don't see how we can generate the revenue needed to even operate the city to a point to where we just aren't completely broke and have to go not to, what do we have to do to, to, to even supply fire service in a new, in a new area, but next year, going to the standpoint of, okay, well, what are we doing budget-wise? And how are we cutting? Cutting staff, cutting services to an already city, you know, to a city that has issues there to begin with. On the horse park, I've got a brother who's a financial advisor, and I called him this morning and I said, "Okay, with a $70,000 a year investment, if I could get a $2.3 million return of that investment, is that a pretty sound investment?" I think it would be, and I know that's hard to look at, but consider the impact. When you've got the number of hotel stays, when you have the number of events that we have, when you have the number of opportunities that that center has, it, it bothers me beyond end to know that we are considering, and there's a, you know, there's an idea on the table, to cut all monies to the Humane Society, to cut all funds to the library. Those are real things that when we look as a quality-of-life perspective across this community, to think what the impact of that would be. I, I think, I think it's time for this community, the county has raised taxes nine of the 10 of the last 10 years. And I think it's a real time for us as a community to realize that we have one of the lowest millage rates in the community. We have a university. We have an expanding population. We have city services that must be provided. You know, we can look at images all day long from proposals here. We're having to go look for significant funding to even do the things we should have been doing, to bring us up to code across our community in the tune of $20 million to even bring those things to speed. How else do you do it? I mean, it, it's, it's time for us to realize that there are some hard steps that have to be followed. I think it's, I, I find a hard time of saying, of writing a letter, Mayor. You're writing a letter to the, to the library and saying, or to the, or to the Humane Society. Your $170,000 this year will no longer be there. Basically, we're closing your doors. But yet we can't ask average mean household, household, our housing value in this community is what, $150,000 roughly? So we're asking, you know, those people to pay what, $15? $20? You know? But yet we're going to tell somebody that we're going to close our library. I know those are extremes, but those are the things that are being discussed here.
Further discussion. Alderman first.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of closing remarks here. One comment, remark, and then one question. The closing remark is that, you know, again, we appreciate the Harsh Park and other entities, but the Harsh Park is not the only entity in this city, in this county, that provides and has an economic impact. There are other businesses, other entities that has a very substantial impact to our city and that does not get $70,000 a year. Again, I'm going to state this and I'm going to ask my question. The Harsh Park has gotten $836,237.85 since the fiscal year of 98. It was intended by a motion of this board on the second day of May of 1995 for an amount up to $130,000 to be contributed to the Harsh Park for a period of three years for operational costs. And I voted present because I wasn't for it then, and I'm not for it now. Now, my last question, Mr. Mayor, to you is, in this proposal that's on the table tonight, as to salary adjustment, I just want to make sure I know all the information. I want to make sure that this salary adjustment only contains figures that allows for coverage for the 1.75% increase in salary to offset the employees' contribution from 7.25% to 9%, and that it does not include any realignment, any adjustments, or any salary increase for anybody else. Is that correct?
Actually, it only includes 1%. It's 1% across the board to make up for the, the per's adjustment.
And the reason I asked that question, I'm glad I asked that question, because when we discussed it, I thought it was 1.75, so I didn't see anything that said differently, but, but-
No, the original figure was, was nearly double that. That, that was cut even in the model that reflects a tax increase because it can't be afforded.
So, but just a 1% increase? So that's all that-
That's a 1% increase.
That's all in that figure?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got just one question.
Alderman Davis.
On the change in healthcare or health insurance costs, we know that is a change that is coming, correct?
May I answer that?
You may.
I, I have not sat in the meetings, and Ms. Outlaw and the mayor or Ms. Spruill can provide more details, but our initial discussions with our insurer said that we were looking at about a 15% increase in health insurance, which is about $110,000 in the general fund. The, the mayor, the city clerk, the chief administrative officer, and our insurer, our, our insurance representative have worked to look for some other options for funding that that would keep our premiums at the same level. And the best option to keep our premiums at the same level, and correct me if I'm misstating this, is to go to a very high deductible-type policy and reinsure, insure claims over a certain value.
How high is the public deductible?
Well, actually, it's going to be a self-funded policy, and it's, we had options of $50,000, $75,000, and $100,000.
But that's not the individual's deductible. That's what the reinsurance is for. Individual would not notice a change in sure. But now, that's a different item, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, from the $67,500 that's in option one. That $67,500 is a 1% offset of the 1.75% effective cut that employees are going to receive. But what happened this year was, the, the state, in balancing their budget, raised the required employee contribution to the state retirement system by 1.75%. What that means is every state employee or every employee that's on state retirement, as ours are, will effectively see 1.75% less in their paycheck this year. We started with the proposition of trying to restore that full 1.75%. Our budgetary outlook is so bad this year that even with every revenue source that is laid on the table in this first option, the best we can do is get it to a 1% increase. So the employee would still notice about a 0.75% difference in pay, which would be a negative 0.75 difference. Further discussion. Alderman Court.
Well, I was going to first say that I, I do agree that there's definitely some need here in our budget if we want to be able to do all the things that we would like to do. And also that, yes, the majority of the tax burden that people pay goes to the county and the schools, and that if perhaps those entities had shown a little more restraint and hadn't gone up on millage sometimes on a yearly basis, we might find ourselves in a different situation now. But the reality is, we're here now looking at, at these numbers, and one of the things that I'm thinking is that we do need to ask the public, as a city, to approve bonds for municipal complexes. I mean, that's a given in my mind, that we do need that. And the truth to that is that that in and of itself would represent a millage increase because that's, that's how those bonds are repaid, and it's temporary, but it is a millage increase. My concern is that if we do go ahead and increase taxes, that we will have a much harder time convincing the public to also fund a municipal complex in addition to those increased taxes. And it is my opinion that the need in the city for those facilities is great- And it is my opinion that the need in the city for those facilities is great enough that we should do everything we can to make it, make it as is, if we can. And I mean, we have that chance with options two and three. My preference would be option two, personally. But I guess I want to state that I don't feel like this is the right time for a tax increase because of those overweighting factors and the need that we have for these facilities.
Further discussion. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll now move into a vote on Aldman Sistruck's motion, which is to direct the city clerk to produce a budget based on the assumptions of option one presented. Please answer yea, nay, or abstain, as the city clerk calls your name.
Aldman Carver?
No.
Aldman Sistruck?
Yea.
Aldman Parker?
Nay.
Aldman Corey?
Nay.
Aldman Dumas?
Yea.
Aldman Perkins?
Nay.
Aldman Vaughn?
Nay.
By a vote of two in favor with five against, this measure fails. Discussion.
May we? Oh, sorry, go ahead. You go ahead. Can we move down the list, then? I move that we direct the city clerk's office to do what was in that previous motion, except change it to option two.
All right, the motion from Aldman Sistruck is to direct the city clerk's office to prepare a budget to be presented on September 7, 2010, using the assumptions as presented in option two of the handout. Is that your motion?
I think so.
You're here second.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Aldman Corey, Aldman Sistruck. Do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Discussion by the members of the board. And to clarify, this is the option that includes the environmental services program.
And no increase to city staff? No.
This would not effectively include a millage increase, but it would necessitate a sanitation fee.
City staff salaries, the court staff, nobody's.
Further discussion.
Called to question.
Is there any objection? Any objection to voting? All right, seeing none, we'll now move into a vote on Aldman Sistruck's motion, which is to direct the city clerk, to, the city clerk's office, to prepare a budget to be presented at the September 10, 2007, meeting of the Board of Aldman, using the assumptions presented in option two. Please answer yea, nay, or abstain, as the city clerk calls your name.
Aldman Sistruck?
Yea.
Aldman Corey?
Yea.
Aldman Perkins?
Nay.
Aldman Carver?
Nay.
Aldman Parker?
Yea.
Aldman Dumas?
Nay.
Nay.
By a vote of three in favor with four against, this measure fails. I guess the only question remaining with this item is whether y'all want to discuss option three. If not, we can move on with the agenda. We'll note, depending on how some of these line item discussions go, maybe we'll have some more clarity. If we don't get any more directions for the city clerk's office, we're going to have to recess and come back for another meeting. They have a work product that has to be done, they can't do it until y'all tell them how you want the budget prepared.
Mayor?
Something's got to give.
I feel personally that the implementation of the environmental services program is kind of a smokescreen in a sense that you're taking the funds and pulling them out of the general fund and having a rate increase. And I'm getting to that to say that that's more of a smokescreen to get to, either way it's money out of somebody's pocket, whether it be a tax increase or a rate increase, but I feel as if, I've been talking to my constituents and the general public and kind of been surprised at times that some of the folks that have been to a point to know that it's an economically tough time, but at the same time, that, you know, nobody would balance their own personal checkbook the way this one has been balanced over the last couple of years, and if it's time for a rate, or a millage increase, then that's what we need to do, it doesn't need to be smokescreened by something else. If that's, if it's time for that, if it's time, the start was tremendously growing, which I think it has, I've been here since 1995, and I've seen the growth, and I'm not so sure when the last time we even had a millage increase was, was it 1976?
Other than the three mills for street improvements.
Right, right. You know, if that's what it is, then I'd be more in favor of a millage increase for truly what it is and not try to disguise it any other way. I would maybe be in favor of that, and then some kind of, you know, the spending goes up in each option from three to one, so I mean, the option one is the most, the highest amount of expenses and adjustments, so maybe something where we could get our, I think it may be on the brink in the city of Starkville to have some kind of millage increase that, you know, to adequately fund all these infrastructure needs we have. I know in Ward 1, that's probably one of our largest complaints, or the infrastructure's just degraded to a point that something's got to happen.
Ward 2, as well.
So, I mean, I would be more in favor of that, and then, you know, decrease, and maybe tie option one without the environmental services program, plus the expenditures out of option three.
You can, the closest model on this sheet to what you just said is if you put a millage increase instead of environmental services into option two, it's almost the same figure. It's $280,000, and environmental services is $265,000.
I've just, again, I've been surprised, some folks that I've talked to that pay high, or are in a higher tax bracket than I am in the city of Starkville and pay taxes, I mean, some business-minded individuals understand that you've got to make your business run efficiently and effectively, and you've got to make government run efficiently and effectively. I think we've done a good job to date. I think it's time that Starkville's stepping into another era of growth, and we've got a lot of issues we've got to deal with, and Carver Drive is a great example, it's, we can't deal with that right now because we don't have the funds, and we'll get into Lynn Lane later, I've got a whole other different perspective on Lynn Lane, but on the multi-use path, but it's time that, we've got to do something about infrastructure and... When you talk about this item by item, things I am in favor of, or Municode, I've gone around in different cities in the nation and seen their websites, and the fact that you can pull minutes up from the last 15 or 20 years. You know, I really, at first glance, I thought the city of Starkville website was pretty good, and then I started looking around, and it's not as good as I thought it was due to the fact that you should be able to save people visits to city hall, you should be able to save people visits into the city clerk's office if they can get all the forms they need online, and at least they can fill them out and then bring them in if they need to. And then municipal complex preliminary work, I'm pretty much against that. If it's something to do with the refurbishment of the Starkville Electric building, I could be in favor of that, but anything to do with, you know, land acquisition, I think, again, you need to have some kind of public survey, maybe some kind of opinion poll if it's time to even move forward with the municipal complex. I don't want to dedicate funds to something until we are pretty sure that it would pass a referendum. So, that's kind of, I'm going to add one more subject. And then the horse park is something that I think is financially successful regardless of what we give them or don't give them. I think if you want to increase your return on investment, I mean, if you're going to cut every other outside contribution, I mean, they should also be prepared to accept some kind of cut from the city. I mean, it doesn't have to be a, you know, it doesn't have to be a total cut, I don't think that's fair, but I mean, I think that they're pretty financially sound out there. Brickley Miller's done a good job with everything she's had over the last couple of years, and it is a $2.3 million investment on everything round about all the tourism that they bring in, so we do need to support the horse park in some form or fashion, I'm not so sure that it needs to be $70,000 range, but that's my ramblings.
Aldman Vaughn.
I move we move to a quick recess.
Okay, I think that's a good idea. Is there any objection to moving into recess? Any objection? Seeing none, standing.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
Meeting will now come back to order. See if there's any discussion left on the topic where we were, which was the three potential options for directing the city clerk's office to balance budget. If not, we've got several budgetary items to consider after that. So, are there any further comments on those? The one option we haven't considered is option three at this point. Is there any further discussion on that topic? Any discussion? Any discussion? All right, seeing none...
Wait, sorry, we're discussing amongst ourselves. I think Mr. Carver wants to make a motion.
Yeah.
It is presumptuous.
Yeah, I'll make a... Yeah, I move that we direct appropriate city clerk staff to, for an option, based on option two with a millage rate increase of 280, change the contingency fund budget from $50,000 to $65,000, and to not implement the environmental services program, with the horse park being funded at $50,000, which everything is the same except for an increase in establishing a contingency budget, $15,000 more, and dropping the implementation of the environmental services program.
All right, so the motion would be to direct the city clerk's office to prepare a budget to be presented on September 7, 2010, using the assumptions presented in option two with the following changes. Adding in a $280,000 millage increase and taking out $265,000 for the creation of an environmental services program, and changing the contingency line item from $50,000 to $65,000. Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
You're here second.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Aldman Sistruck. Aldman Carver, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
All right, one quick comment. If I understand this correctly, it doesn't do anything with the fire station line that's left at 188.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Further discussion.
I've got to discuss that then, I mean, what kind of, what kind of funding are you talking about with 188? What is that getting you? That's getting you, that's not getting you a shift, is it?
It gets you the, oh, excuse me, it gets you the shift, you will lose probably your turnouts and the truck refurbishment. Now, the truck refurbishment is an option that I'm not crazy about, but the chief has said that he may be able to sustain, and chief, I may ask you to weigh in on this because you were going to check with the rating bureau to see if they were going to insist on rating us this year.
It would be, it would be next year, but that would be rated higher, and all it would take is a letter from the board stating that your desire is to be held off a year or so from being rated.
So, is that a one-year extension, or is that just, is that a one-time deal? The letter from the board, the letter from us, is that a one-time annual extension?
As far as extension, now, this is, this is new character for me, and I did not ask about multiple extensions or anything, but the question was asked, was could we ask to not be rated, to be rated this coming year and follow up?
And the issue with that is, that truck has to be refurbished before we're rated, otherwise, it will have an adverse effect on our rating. So, I guess something definitely to be apprised of is that is a $60,000 expenditure that, if not made this year, will be very pressing for next year.
Maybe, could I go a little bit trouble about getting out of line here as far as the firefighters' turnout? I don't get turnouts for those four firefighters. I can't use them. I don't have, I don't have anything that can keep closing those guys.
What's your bare bones minimum? I mean, I'm just asking. If I were to make an amendment, what would be to get you four firefighters' turnouts somewhere over 188 and less than 280?
I've probably done my books and looked at it before. I don't know as well enough off the top of my head.
These items can be, we're not, we're not voting on this line item individually.
We're voting on direction.
We're voting on a direction, so these numbers can be shifted during the process.
Okay.
Further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, let me make sure I understand, this motion does have a millage increase in, is that correct?
A millage increase that would generate $280,000 in revenue, however that computes millage.
Right, you answered my question, it has the millage increase, that's all I want to be sure.
I've got a question. Chief Man, how, has there ever been a time, or do you know of an example of, and I know there's no way to staff Fire Station 5 completely, but is there, how would the, how would the one shift operation work?
I'm just going to have to take them, and it's a hit and miss, I'm going to have to take them and build them in with the staff that we have, and then when we've got it, we can pull them out there and put them out there at three times with the current level of staffing. I have plenty of people for that whole station, but what gets lost in the shuffle period is military activation, multiple military activations, sick leave, extended sick leave, family medical leave, and it just eats my numbers down. That's the, that's the problem that I juggle with keeping my minimal staff. And I use, I use my admin, and I lean on him way more, trying to, he winds up pulling shifts way more than I should, stretching that out and making that work, you know? So, as far as what we're doing, we're bare bones running. If war gets over, and I get the guys back, I'm in great shape at that moment, but to answer your question, I would wind up, you're giving me four guys with this option, I would wind up with three guys out there on a good day, and I could basically borrow all, I'd have to cancel some vacations and everything, and that's what I'm doing, I'm operating on bare bones running.
I guess just another question from my standpoint. What happens if we don't staff this fire station? But do we maintain our current fire rating, or do we just not get a lower fire rating?
We don't get a lower rating if it were re-rated.
But we...
And we would not drop down. You're not going to drop down until you're re-rated, unless, unless there's some kind of issue where the rating bureau just walks in. So, no, we would not drop down.
Is that fire station just south of, and I know we're comparing, and I don't like comparing things here, but in Tupelo, when you leave the mall, I don't know what road this is, when you leave the mall going into town, on the road where the mall and all that stuff is, there's a new fire station there when you cross under 78 on the left, and from what I can understand, that fire station is vacant. Do they use that, do you know? Is it staffed? Okay.
Now, it's just recently been staffed.
But it's set vacant for a while, am I correct? I remember passing by and it looked empty, so I must have caught it just right when it... Okay.
That's what I grant, I think the fire's just been three years to staff it.
That's a good point.
Well, that's what we were thinking, I got clarification on that. It's not required, so, but the danger you run if, if you don't begin to staff it is you have a fire station sitting there that nobody is occupying, doing anything with.
It deteriorates over time.
And there is a reason that fire station was built. Certainly, grant source funding probably caused it to be built quicker than it would have, but that's a... have, but that's a fire station in all likelihood that was going to have to be built within the next 10 years, no matter what.
And I agree, I agree completely with there, but I think the, I don't think we should lose sight of the fact that, I mean, if that, by no means it's the best option here, but I mean, we are in really difficult times. Can this station wait a year? Do we have to take action this year? And I, I think we have so much stuff that we need to accomplish now within a given budget that we have. I'll just throw that out as an option, and frankly, I hadn't even thought about that until now, but no, not best case, but I think it's...
I don't think it's going to be a great situation either way, but if you don't begin the initial staffing processes now and next year, after, two years after the extension and you're passing this something on to the next board that all of a sudden they've got to come up with 12 firemen?
That's a good point.
I mean, you've got to start shipping away. I don't see any other option. And no, it won't be perfect and no, it won't be as, as it needs to be, but at the same time, you're giving a 900 and something thousand dollar fire station by the federal government. You've got to take that if you're going to talk about economic development on the bypass and you're going to talk about any kind of, any kind of growth out there, you've got to have the fire protection, so. What would $48,000 get you, literally just, just the equipment without the staffing?
Nothing.
$48,000?
$48,000 is going to give you one firefighter each.
That's not even feasible to talk about that.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll now move into vote on Alderman Carver's motion, which is to direct the City Clerk's Office to prepare a budget to be presented at the seven, at the September 7 meeting using the assumptions presented in option two with the following changes: striking the environmental services program and $265,000 that went with it, adding a 200, a millage rate that would result in the value of $280,000 being added to the budget and at, and changing the contingency line from 50,000 to 65,000. Please answer yea, nay, or abstain if the City Clerk calls your name.
Alderman Parker?
Nay.
Alderman Corr?
Yea.
Alderman Dumas?
Nay.
Alderman Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn?
Nay.
Alderman Carver?
Yeah.
Alderman Sistrunk?
Yea.
By a vote of three in favor with four against, this measure fails. I think, and please feel free to correct me if somebody disagrees, we've probably exhausted just about everything we can do with these options. Perhaps going through these line item discussions that are on the agenda will, will help frame things up. We're going to have to come back in another meeting to get this budget reconciled in very short order. So sometime later this week, we're probably going to have to recess until. But let's go on and, and have these discussions and see if that gives us any more clarity on things.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Can we move to item L? I think we've been discussing all those items enough already unless, I'm just speaking now, of course, the board can do whatever they want.
We can, but the agenda needs to be amended or you need to let me just run through them.
I moved that the agenda be amended so that we can proceed to item number 11 under, item number L, excuse me, under Board Business.
Okay. Alderman Perkins has made a motion to amend the agenda, striking items I, J, and K from the original agenda. Is that, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Perkins, you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Alderman Dumas?
I, I think it would be helpful if we did take these so that, from a staffing standpoint, if they know that we officially declined the Environmental Services Department, because we've looked at them from a holistic view here. And I think, you know, there's some of us agree, and, and I think that would be one way to pull this thing together so that we could have a formal acceptance or denial of each one of these moving forward.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll move into a vote on the motion, which is to strike items I, J, and K from the agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
I'm going to divide. That was close. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Wait, raise your hand and keep it up. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. All right, this measure passes. We'll now move to item L on the agenda, the consideration of calling for a public hearing to amend the sidewalk ordinance to include a variance appeal process.
Mayor, I, I would like to refer this to the Transportation Committee. They're the group that developed the ordinance originally, and I don't believe they've had any input into a variance or appeal process.
Is that a motion?
It is.
Motion has been made to refer the consideration of the calling for a public hearing to amend the sidewalk ordinance to include a variance process and appeal process to the Transportation Committee. Alderman Sistrunk, is that your motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Dumas. Alderman Sistrunk, do you wish to speak on the merits? Any discussion? Any discussion?
I'll just say that, you know, this, this is the first I've heard about it, of this, and I think I've talked to those on the Transportation Committee, and I think everyone is in agreeance that this is a good process. But one thing that I know they do want to talk about is, is they just want to have the discussion of what this means because they, their initial question to me was, you're asking a, you know, you're asking an appointed citizen board to make a, to make an, a variance. And I think they didn't understand the process. So I just want to take it back so that they understand what it is that they're walking into, since they're the ones that are responsible for enacting this, so.
And, and I add to that, and I'd like some kind of direction from the city attorney because I was under the impression that they weren't making the variance, or they could make the variance, but also they could make recommendations, you know, the recommendation process too. And, and when is the next time y'all meet them? Is that something, you know, you've got my cell phone number, is that something you can call me with the Transportation Committee? I'd be more than happy to, to discuss it. I think it's well-written and it's something we need to pursue.
Yeah, I think it's a good process and I think they're, they just want to be sure that they work out the details of what it is they're, you know, they're working, they're walking into, so.
Alderman Carver, let me state that I raised that issue today when looking at the language because that didn't necessarily jive with me, and the language is still being tweaked since we were even before a public hearing stage.
Okay.
And we're going to make very clear that they're just making a recommendation that will go up the chain like any advisory board does.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll now move into vote on Alderman Sistrunk's motion, which is to refer item L to the Transportation Committee. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Let's divide real quick.
It's just me.
Anyone other than Alderman Parker that is in opposition? All right, by measure six to one, it is passed. The next matter on the agenda is the discussion and consideration of the remaining 2010 Priority Three capital improvement projects and possible priority projects for 2011 capital improvement program. I've asked Edward if he could present these, I guess using two different projections. One is what his budget for capital projects looks like without the $324,000 due to the accounting error that, that we discovered this week and what it looks like with the $324,000 in it. Mr. Kemp?
I put this at your table this afternoon and I think you'll have it maybe at the bottom of your stack. Let me kind of explain what this is. It may look familiar to you a little bit, but you haven't seen it for about a year. The top half, if you'll just try to look at the top half right now, this is basically the formula, if you will, or the outline that the board adopted last year to set forth the 10-year plan. And essentially, at the top of that, you have some predetermined obligations, some yearly maintenance obligations, sidewalk construction 20,000, storm drainage maintenance 35, ADA improvements 50,000. You have a STIP match, which matches our, our federal dollars that we need to account for, $100,000, $105,000. Those things, if the board continues to want to, to fund those types of projects, those would need to come out of the top, out of the top, and that's, subtotals of $210,000. Whatever's left, it was, it was decided to allocate based on these percentages. Again, these percentages can change, you can do a variety of different combinations. So with the mayor's directive, you, if you then plug in a $400,000 capital improvement budget and a $600,000 capital improvement budget, that's what you see down, down kind of in the middle or in the bottom portion there. The, the top part with the yearly maintenance and predetermined obligations obviously don't change from the four to the six, but you look below at the variable improvements such as the roadway maintenance overlays, the drainage, the roadway rebuild, and those funds or allocations are set forth there. I was asked to also include the projects that we have, that the board or past boards have obligated, obligated, have programmed, and program meaning that they are on a capital improvement program. We have one for drainage, which includes about almost 30 drainage projects that we've been working over, over the last two to three years. We also have a roadway capital improvement program that includes not only roadway maintenance projects, overlays, priority one through three, but also includes roadway rebuilds, that roads that there's no use in overlaying them again, you're going to have to build them up from the ground up. And those, those projects still remaining on the books that have not been completed are listed there at the bottom. So we have about $260,000 worth of priority three overlays that we were not able to finish this year. We have about $1.5 million of roadway rebuild, and we have about $1 million in capital improvement drainage left. So that's kind of a snapshot of where we are. That doesn't include any new overlays that were not on the original three-year plan.
And it doesn't reprioritize any of the current programmed improvements?
No, it's simply what we have on, on the books right now.
So this is a 10-year plan. We're in year three, correct? Or year two?
We're actually in year, year one because the last two years we've done bond improvements and bond improvements, two sets of bonds. So we're really starting on year one this upcoming year based on the money that's left over from our bond projections, if I, if that makes sense. So based on these projections, next year we have, or was anticipated $600,000. If you keep that same millage devoted toward capital improvement, that number continues to climb over the next 10 years. 600 would be the lowest.
So we're spending $58,000, $58,500 on road rebuild projects, and we've got a million and a half left in the 10-year fund.
We, I guess I should also indicate, we're not going to finish all of these projects in 10 years.
At our current funding levels?
At our current funding levels. There's no way to do it.
And that's for roadway maintenance, drainage improvements, and rebuilds?
At this, at this, at this current percentage breakdown, there's no way to, to fully catch up on all those rebuilds. I think we get pretty close on the drainage, but the roadway rebuilds are just so expensive and we've got several of them.
So the rebuild is the big key. And I guess drainage improvement wise, I'm thinking long-term here. 10 years, we catch up to a level that...
10 years, you're able to do just about all of those 30 projects. That doesn't include any other projects that come up. For instance, last year's bridge that blew out on Old West Point Road. We have other bridge needs around town that are not on the list, so I wouldn't say that that is an extensive list, those 30 projects.
Alderman Sistrunk, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Outlaw or Ms. Pearl, could one of y'all tell me how the debt service for the bonds factors into this? Do we have all of this money available for either a 400 or a $600,000 budget under our current budget impasse?
When dealt with the 600, as I understand, that was part of our discussion this past week. We had $400,000 of it there. It depends on what you decide as board dedicate from a millage standpoint to doing capital improvements.
And if we increase our capital improvements, we have to cut something else in our budget as, at, at our current impasse?
Where that $324,000 becomes such a significant event is you're not talking about it for capital improvements just in the context of this year. If, if that money does not go into a designation for capital improvements, then it keeps rolling how it affects your capital improvement projections over 10 years. So you would lose $3 million over 10 years by keeping that money just floating in the general fund. That's where I, I, I view it really as, as, as not something that, that should be considered to not include that money in capital improvement, because if you do it, the road improvement plan that we have will not function.
So the difference between the 400 and 600,000, you're saying that to fund it at 600,000, we have to find 200,000 more in our budget?
That...
I mean, where's the...
That's the, that's the $324,000 question now. To hit $600,000, yeah? And that, that raises a question that can be looked at in, in looking at the budget figures. It's, it's not an exact add up to, to $600,000. So this year, because you've got $400,000 there, maybe you can take a little less, but the reason I say maybe is that model is built on the rollover funds you have from each previous year. So you've got to take into account, this year's budget is built to have some rollover to go into next year, and that dissipates as you go throughout the budget. So, so that may be why $324,000 is, is needed to get you from 400 to 600,000 that you can actually spend.
Mr. Mayor, we don't have to take any action on this, and we should just wait till the, the meeting or look at the real, the budget presentation.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. The next matter on the agenda is the consideration of the approval for the mayor to sign the agreement for the FAA AIP grant with matching funds of $7,500, $656, and those are airport matching funds. Alderman Carver?
Yes, Mayor. I brought this from the board tonight. I know sometimes we don't like to bring things in on the last date, but this is time-sensitive. This is wonderful news. They have received a $290,000 grant to be used for the two land purchases they've done over the last couple of years. The $7,600 is a budgeted amount, so this is nothing more than just, more than anything, a good news that they've received almost $300,000 and yet another grant out at the airport.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, sir. I move that the board, or that the mayor sign the exception for the FAA AIP grant three dash 28 dash 0068 dash 015 dash 2020 and the M dot portion of matching funds.
Alderman Carver has made a motion to approve for the mayor to sign the grant agreement for the FAA AIP grant three dash 28 dash 0068 dash 015 dash 2010 with matching funds of $7,656 required. Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Cory. Alderman Carver, you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is the request of a... The next matter on the agenda is the request of approval of a consultant to perform engineering and design-related services related to the Lynn Lane Multi-Use Path Project and authorization to enter into a contractual agreement to provide said services. A little background on this one, uh, this is the budgeted work, uh, that, that y'all passed, uh, last year, uh, when you, you passed, uh, both your, uh, road improvement plans and drainage improvement plans, and also passed your annual budget for the work to be done this year. And, uh, the, uh, policy reason behind this work, and, and I think what led y'all to adopt it last year, is, uh, we have been given a reasonable amount of assurance by MDOT that should we get our application, uh, for the Lynn Lane Multi-Use Path, uh, before them again, it probably will be approved again. I mentioned earlier, uh, we, we do still have to find sources for the twenty percent match required, uh, and, uh, I think it probably will take some help, uh, from other interested organizations, and I've been doing some work on that o- over the last year as well. But this is not related to that, other than, this is to get the project shovel-ready, so that when we make that, uh, grant application, uh, we actually have a project ready to go, and we won't get timed out on the grant again. Discussion. Alderman Carver?
What kind of match percentage-wise is it from MDOT versus local?
Eighty-twenty.
Eighty-twenty. How is this tied in with the, uh, the Tiger Two grant application, as far as if we get Tiger Two grant application with that fund, a hundred percent of Lynn Lane, should we keep it shovel-ready for the prospect of getting that Tiger Two grant?
I don't know for sure, but probably not, because those are federal dollars.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and the issue with Tiger Two is, uh, they built that program to be an eighty-twenty match or, 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 or something close to that, and they built it based on monies that we were already spending for capital improvements. Since the twenty percent match on this project, uh, has not previously been budgeted, it would have been hard to account for, for that, because, like I said, the, the, the money as of right now doesn't exist for it.
But now, there's a line item in Tiger Two that has construction of Lynn Lane, correct, or not, not in using, is that in not in using MDOT funds and paying for it solely out of Tiger Two, or?
I think two things. One is, they were using this hundred thousand dollars as leverage for the city's match, um, so that went into the, I can't remember, two-point-eight million dollars, whatever the city's match was. The other thing is, they have proposed as part of Tiger Two to continue Lynn Lane further to the west, tie back into Highway Twelve along industrial park, where they've been tied to the ship.
So, nothing with the project we're talking about is extending it?
Other than leveraging that, that match.
The match. Alderman Vaughn?
Skip, how much, how much is involved in this?
It's, um, it's a pretty, pretty extensive process to go through, the federal highway and MDOT's requirements. You have to do a pretty lengthy environmental document. It's, uh, part of that environmental document, you have to do a cultural resource, you have to want to do a wildlife, uh, you have to do a phase-one environmental assessment, we have to have all the properties that we would have to acquire for right-of-way, we have to have all those appraised, we have to have them all surveyed, we have to have all the deeds of right-of-way, deeds prepared. Um, that's in addition, just to doing the, finishing the survey and doing the design of the actual path. All of these, all of these steps and things are federally mandated, um, steps to, to, to use your federal dollars.
Mr. Kemp, but that's a tall order, uh, and, and of course, you know, we took a lot of work to get the easements for the car drive ditch for the re-road, um, and this is more extensive, uh, it's a lot of, lot of work.
Mayor?
Alderman Corey?
Now, am I still correct in that our, our monies currently that we've invested in as far as meeting the environmental services, I mean, the, oh, sorry, in meeting the environmental studies, uh, and all these other aspects, uh, will still count towards our twenty percent?
That's right.
I, I, pretty-
Almost.
MDOT has a very complicated, complex formula, how they calculate the match, but most of the money that we're spending will be credited through our match. That's why it's a very rigorous process, uh, to, to spend.
Just to clarify, the hundred thousand that's approved tonight will be-
It's a hundred thousand.
To perform the task you were just talking about, in taking it through de-preparation, um, finishing of the EIS process, those type of-
It will, it will not include right-of-way acquisition or utility relocation, if from one.
I mean, and, to, to clarify based on that question, uh, thi- this isn't a budgetary matter. Y'all have budgeted the hundred thousand dollars for this previously, uh, it's, it's not expending a new a hundred thousand dollars.
What would this consult fee be? How much is that, you know?
Well, there's, I, it's, the way that MDOT makes you set up your consulting fees, it's not a set number, it's a, it depends on actually how much work is performed. Um, there's an estimated amount, it will fall under the hundred thousand, we think, but that includes all of those other sub consultants that I just mentioned.
That included everything?
That, that would include, basically, as the mayor said, you get it shovel-ready.
Alderman Davis?
Move to approve Neil Schaefer's consultant to provide engineering and design-related services related to Lynn Lane Multi-Use Path Project and authorize to enter contractual, contractual agreement to provide the said services.
Alderman Dumas has moved to approve of the lowest and best, uh, bid of the consultant, Neil Schaefer, to perform engineering and design-related services related to the Lynn Lane Multi-Use Path Project and authorization to enter into, I'm sorry, I got that wrong, enter into a contractual a- agreement to provide, uh, said services. Scratch that, it, it's not a bid, uh, or it's not the lowest and best, uh. Does anything need to be in there about the, the scoring? Because it was a score process, okay.
But the score was in-
You, you got the motion right, I got it wrong. It's, it's what I just repeated back to you without lowest and best in it. Uh, is, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Corey. Alderman Dumas, you wish to speak on merits?
Do not.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
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 By vote of five-two, measure passes. The next matter on the agenda is the request for approval to advertise to fill vacant police officer position. Chief?
No. We had number one.
Uh, request for the approval to hire Adam, Adam Fulmer to fill a vacant firefighter position.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. This request is to, uh, fill the vacant position for a firefighter. Uh, we went through the process of advertising, um, for the, for the position for board approval. We went through a process of testing and, uh, interviewing applicants for the position, and the recommendation is that we hire Adam Fulmer, uh, to fill this position. Adam Fulmer, um, lives here in Starville. He currently works for, uh, Brisland Incorporated in Columbus, uh, has worked for them for, uh, approximately a year and a half. He finished three years at Mississippi State, um, and did well through the process. In addition to asking to hire, uh, Mr. Fulmer, we're asking permission to hold other candidates from this pool for consideration for other openings that may occur, uh, within the next sixty days. There are other applicants that we think are, are good candidates also, and, uh, should other openings develop in the next sixty days, we'd like to, uh, use other applicants from this applicant pool, uh, before we go back through the process, extensive process of advertising and interviewing and, and testing. So, that's our, our recommendation to you, uh, based on the results of our selection process.
Mr. Mayor, one question.
Alderman.
Uh, Mr. Vaughn, where was the advertisement submitted? What, newspapers or other places?
Starville and Columbus, which is our, our tradition with these positions.
And how many applicants did you have?
Thirty-seven. We had, we had thirty-seven applicants that were, were qualified to go through. We, in addition to those thirty-seven, we had, uh, six applicants that were disqualified based on, uh, MVR checks and, and not meeting the criteria in the, uh, in the job description.
Was the scoring for this recommended person pretty close to any other, um, finalists, so to speak?
Yes, there, uh, it was a, it was a fairly close process. Uh, there are, as I say, there are other candidates that we think are likewise good candidates, that, uh, we anticipate, uh, should openings develop, and, and at this point in time, we think there's a strong probability that there will be other positions developing within the next sixty days.
Would it be fair to say that, um, that one of your, um, persons who, um, may have been close to your finalists was maybe within just a very few points?
Yes, yes.
Did y'all give consideration to all, all factors and things that was, you know, that should be considered?
Yes, our, our selection process, uh, you know, we, we go through the, the application process, we then put all applicants through a, um, a physical testing process that consists of running, uh, a mile and a half within fourteen minutes, and then there are a series of, um, five, uh, station testing out of Fire Station Three that are simulated activities based on requirements for firefighter. All of these are either pass or fail. You either complete the process or you don't. We had, um-
Who?
A total of three candidates that did not complete the physical testing process and were excluded based on those results.
Who was on the interviewing, uh, panel for these?
On the interview panel, um, there was, um, myself, uh, Chief Mann, Training Officer Yarber, uh, um, the, uh, the, the three battalion chiefs, uh, a captain, a sergeant, a lieutenant, and, and one firefighter. So, we had a total of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, uh, candidates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion? Alderman Carver?
Question, I don't think that's a good idea to keep a pool. Did, did you say how many you'll keep for the next sixty days? That's possible pool three? Six?
Um, we didn't set a, a definite number as far as, uh, the, the cutoff, uh, but we had, uh, we had certainly, would you say, four or five that turned?
Yes, and, and Mayor, if I can give you some information on that, I, I've got two guys that have, that have told me that they're, they're gonna leave if they pass the test that they're going to in two weeks. Uh, they've, they've already told me that they're gone, and we can't, it has nothing to do with us, it's, uh, they're going to Afghanistan, and, so I, I've, I've, I've got to be able to plug some people in, so.
That's a good idea.
I move approval.
Move approval. Uh, Alderman Dumas made a motion to approve, uh, of the hire of Adam Fulmer to fill a vacant firefighter position and to keep the-
Yes, and to, and to keep the, the pool vacant for sixty days.
And to keep the pool vacant for sixty days, uh. Do I hear a second?
Or not, um, not vacant, available for sixty days.
All right, Alderman Dumas has made a motion to approve of the hire of Adam Fulmer to fill a vacant firefighter position and to keep the pool of applicants, uh, in that process available for the next sixty days. Uh, Alderman Dumas, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Carver.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Dumas, you wish to speak on merits?
Do not.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
And the two nays I have are Perkins and Vaughn. Are there any other nays? All right, measure passes by vote of five-two. Uh, the next matter on the agenda is a request for approval to advertise, fill vacant police officer positions.
Chief?
Mayor and Board, this request is to fill three, uh, vacant positions for police officers. We've had three people that have left us, one that left, uh, as a retirement, uh, one that left due to medical disability, and one that is leaving, um, due to relocation to San Antonio, Texas. This officer, uh, is currently, uh, recently married, and spouse is, has accepted a job in San Antonio, and they're leaving, so this gives us three vacant positions on the police force that we need to fill. We're requesting for authoriz- authorization to advertise to fill the vacant positions.
Alderman Vaughn?
Didn't we, last time we, um, when we came up with this, didn't we, we supposed to get some telling us, uh, in time before we got this, when, uh, the reason they are leaving? I think that's what you promised the board, that y'all would give us something in time before-
That was stated in the support documentation on here, that, uh, currently have three positions that need to be filled.
They state the whole reason they leaving again?
One is a retirement-
All right.
-that has already occurred. One is a resignation due to a medical disability, the person's become unable to fulfill the position of firefighter and has resigned.
Police officer.
Police, police officer.
I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. Police officer. And the third is a resignation of a, uh, police officer that's relocating to San Antonio, Texas.
Further discussion?
Move rule.
Motion has been made by Alderman Dumas to approve of the advertisement of the, for the filling of vacant police officer, for three vacant police officer positions. Alderman Dumas, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Parker. Alderman Dumas, you wish to speak on merits?
Do not.
Uh, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is the request for approval to continue the services of Huedorf Yan as an independent contractor for electrical inspection services for the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven year.
We were doing McCann?
The consultant first.
Yeah, we're gonna do-
We're doing McCann.
Yeah.
F-two.
Oh, yeah, they're all running together. Request for the approval to hire Clayton McCann as an independent contractor.
No, I'm sorry, not F-two, I'm sorry. H-two.
Okay, are we all agreed? What we're, what we're talking about is a request to, uh, approve the hiring of Clayton McCann as a independent contractor, uh, for construction inspector services. This is in connection with the, uh, Hospital Road Rebuild Project. Uh, the funds for this are included in, in that project, and I'll let, uh, Mr. Kemp speak to this item.
Mr. McCann worked for us last summer, uh, with asphalt inspections, uh, when we did the overlays last year. Essentially, you need an inspector on the ground at, at all times on projects like this to make sure that the contractor's building the project according to specifications. Uh, this gentleman is retired from MDOT, he has over thirty years with MDOT experience. He, uh, after that, he went and worked for Michael Baker, which is a private engineering consulting firm, who does a lot of inspection services for MDOT. He did that for several years. He did that for several years. He lives in the community. He's now back, and he is available to help us do this. It's probably no more than a four to six week, maybe eight week if the weather delays this project. And like Mr. Boyd said, the money is, was included in the project budget.
I got one question. Mr. Webb, your assistant engineer couldn't do this? Were they qualified?
Well, he is qualified to do it. However, with all the projects that we have going on right now, we would basically have to stop what we're doing, what he's doing, for a span of four to six weeks, every day, eight to five. A lot of times, the contractors start at 6:30 or 7 until, you know, dark. And, yeah, we could do it, but it would basically bring our engineering department to a halt.
That's all right. That's all right. I brought it on, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, let me address one issue on the contract. I think this is just clarifull. In the compensation section of the contract, in the last sentence of the compensation section, it references $12,000 when it should spell out $6,500. So just make sure y'all make that change before it goes through.
Thanks, Senator. Thank you.
Discussion.
In that case, I would move approval with the city attorney's recommended change.
Alderman Corey has made a motion to approve of the hire of Clayton McCann as an independent contractor for construction inspector services in connection with the Hospital Road Rebuild Project with changes to the contract suggested by the city attorney to be included. Is that your motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second has been made by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Corey, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I do not.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes.
The next item is to continue services of Huedorf Guen as an independent contractor for electrical inspection services for the remainder of this current budget year and on an as-needed basis for the upcoming budget year. In the past, we had a contract that Mr. Guen was under. We're not proposing a renewal of the contract, but a continuation strictly on an as-needed basis at current rate with no changes. This gives us the flexibility to use only, only when it's absolutely necessary and does not put us under any contractual obligation. In the past, the contract was necessary because at that time, he was working basically full-time and there was an issue regarding PERS. Those have become new points. It would be under 20 hours a week. There's no issue with PERS. There's no contract necessary. So our proposal is to continue the services on an as-needed basis.
Mr. Mayor, I flagged this issue because I thought we were in a little bit of contract no man's land because it references the agreement that Mr. Guen had, but that we'll continue in a different agreement. And I just want to make sure the parameters of the new agreement are firmed up so when the parties get down the road and there's some kind of disagreement as to what the services are going to be, we've got something to fall back on. And so my proposal, Mr. Boyd, would be just to cobble out what this new arrangement's going to be so everybody knows, both parties know what they're getting into.
Well, this is the same arrangement that we have with others such as Bill Webb, for example. You know, we have no prepared written contractual agreement. It's strictly on a as-needed basis and paid and agreed upon rate.
To the contract, we need to say as-needed basis?
It's not a, it's not a contract that we're looking for.
We aren't proposing a contract.
Pretty much like a part-time basis. So it's not a contract that we're looking for.
And then how will the parameters of the work be covered on each basis?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding.
You're going to hire this person for jobs on an as-needed basis, right?
Yes.
And I'm asking, what governs the parameters of the work on each basis? I understand the theoretical arrangement that we've got a guy on hold, he's in the bullpen, he's ready to come work for us on any time. But what defines the terms of each job? Will those then come back to the board for approval?
No, it would be the same as we're currently doing with Bill Webb, for example. We define what is to be done and...
Not our best model. We all comfortable, I just wanted to raise that. I mean, I don't know how much they're going to get paid for these new jobs.
This is not, this is not applying any ground different from what we're already doing with Bill Webb, for example. It's the same basis that we're using those services.
And I understand the Bill Webb model exists, but my question is, again, how do you define the scope of the work on these each? And it may not be important to this board, but I wanted to raise the issue legally.
You define it by your instructions to him of what he is to do.
And so y'all have a verbal agreement? Okay. Okay.
Mr. Attorney, I'm retreating now, just to let us know what you, I understand what you're saying. So what do you recommend to the board?
I think an overall contract needs to be cobbled out, number one, about how this arrangement's going to work, just to get that on the books. And then I think there should be something in writing for each job.
And if we're going to do that, I think we do need to extend it to Mr. Webb. We need to treat each of those contractors similarly.
Because my theory is, the parties get down the road and there's some kind of dispute over the scope of the work, and the city has to have something that backs up what we thought the deal was.
Going to defer to...
He's currently the electrical inspector. So that's his part-time, it's more like a part-time position, not to exceed 20 hours, but he would be under the direction of...
Mr. Hattaway.
Mr. Hattaway. And, but he would work out of Ben Griffin.
So would he have, so would he have job duty handed to him? I mean, like a...
Exactly.
A job description handed to him?
That's exactly right. Well, it'd be the same job description that he has now. What he was doing now was under contract, but he would be doing the same duties, performing the same duties. Am I correct with that? He would be performing the same duties. What we were trying to avoid is a contractual obligation that we would have to him. Now, it's on an as-needed basis, and he'd come in when we asked him to come in to perform those duties that he's currently performing anyway. So he knows the job description. He knows the duties to be performed.
Okay. My recommendation would still be to just bullet point that out and make it clear that it's on an as-needed basis.
I agree with that. I think by virtue of being a contractor, isn't it, or as being a contractor?
I like to see a contract when you're hiring an independent contractor.
When you're hiring a contractor. Right.
Well, that said, I don't know that, well, we don't have a contract prepared. Do we need to look at a one-month extension so that the board can, because it ends in August? We're at the last meeting in August.
But I think the motion that you made here would clear, you know, would firm up what his duties are and how he's to be employed with the city.
Well, this is, this is the arrangement that he's had for all of fiscal year 2010 to this point?
He was working more. He was actually working more than what you're proposing here. He's going to cut it back to what, two, three days? Two days?
Not to exceed 20 hours per week.
And he was at some time working five, four days.
He was on contract, like Boyd said, before, after 40 hours. And that's where this outlaw had to contact with PERS and there was some issues with PERS because he gets on state retirement system.
So we'll be down to one inspector and a half, and a quarter.
Yes, sir. I don't care if it's a half, I count as like this much. Enough to be dangerous.
But in all fairness, this is, the 20 hours per week have been basically in place for all of this year.
And in the event that this is not approved, we'll be down to one.
I make a, I move that we develop and move into a contractual agreement to continue the services of Huedorf Guen on an independent contractor basis, not to exceed 20 hours per week.
Alderman Dumas has made a motion to approve for the development of a contract for the continuance of service is for Huedorf Guen as an inspector, of Huedorf Guen as an independent contractor for the electrical inspection services for the 2010-2011 budget year. Alderman Dumas, is that your motion?
Need to have not to exceed 20 hours in there and may need to have scheduled as-needed in there, too.
All right. The motion is for approval of the development of a contract for the continuance of the services of Huedorf Guen not to exceed 20 hours per week as an independent contractor for electrical inspection services for the 2010-2011 budget year on an as-needed basis.
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I do not.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
I mean, I know the motion is for Mr. Huedorf, but do we need that for every independent contractor we have?
Yes.
I think we do.
Hey, well, where it becomes a separate matter is they don't have one, an arrangement that somehow needs to be modified right now. So that's certainly something we could put on the agenda for the next meeting.
That's right. The issue on the table is this one.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
That concludes everything but items for executive session. You have seen the executive session packet. There is no absolute necessity to go into executive session, but if we need to move into closed session to discuss it, a motion would be...
I'd like to have the discussion of determining a recess date as needed to finalize the budget and then recess after that decision.
Okay. So first, that'll be timely on the agenda after we get through a discussion as to whether we need to discuss executive session. Is there any motion for closed session?
No, I'm going to make a motion to the juror. He wants to know what's the potential day for recess, I mean, before we...
We need to recess. My first intuition is to say Thursday. Tomorrow's going to be too soon.
I'm out of town.
Okay.
I mean, y'all can do it without me.
No, you've got to be here.
It's not like I care if that works.
We can do it tomorrow. It's just going to be hard to turn anything around that's different before tomorrow.
Wednesday, Thursday will be tough for me.
Friday?
I'm out Friday.
I can't do it Friday.
Saturday?
I'm out this week.
I can do it Saturday.
Sunday? It's got to be done. Really, Sunday is too late. We're on a timeline where it takes several days to input the budget. We've got to have a public hearing on it. Something's got to be done.
Wednesday or Saturday works for me.
I'm out of town Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
So are we coming back tomorrow night?
What about Monday?
Look, I could do it Monday.
What's the next Monday?
Monday.
May I be recognized?
Can y'all get it done? Where's Debbie?
She's gone.
Can y'all get it done on that Sunday?
Mr. Mayor, I move that this board stand in recess until 5:30 PM Monday, August 23, 2010, and this boardroom may be used for a city court. So as much as I hate to go to the sportsplex, I want to say it's a sportsplex.
Alderman Perkins has made a motion to recess until Monday, August 23 at 5:30 at the sportsplex. Is that your motion?
Yes, sir. The reason I say I hate to go there is it takes a good bit to get across town. Yes, sir, it's motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Dumas. Alderman Perkins, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Stand in recess.
No. No. We cannot. We simply cannot.
In an effort to improve your viewing quality in Starkville, WOBV and MetroCast are undergoing several major changes. Channel 5 will be changing its affiliate in the near future, upgrading our equipment, and begin showing programming created in our own studios. MetroCast has made a major investment in its wiring infrastructure in Starkville and the surrounding area, and will be changing its channel lineup. While WOBV and MetroCast are modifying their infrastructure, there may be periods where we are off the air. We ask your forgiveness and patience while we are upgrading our signal and programming in Starkville. If we do go off the air on the cable, please try to dust off your old rabbit ears and tune into us on Channel 5 the old-fashioned way. Thank you for watching WOBV Channel 5, the station in the heart of the city.